Okay. Good evening. This is so exciting to have such a crowded chamber. And it is right that we all gather together to celebrate some terrific achievements tonight, which you'll hear about in just a few minutes. But truly, if you all want to stay afterwards and follow along with the council meeting, you are welcome to. Okay. So with that, I would like to call this meeting to order. And if we could do a pledge to the flag. And while there is no one listed here, I almost called this a menu. It's technically an agenda. We have somebody in our audience tonight who I was thrilled to see. Some of you have the privilege of working with this person over and over again. But if we could have legendary coach Mike Cook come down and lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would everyone please remove his hat and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And Mike, don't go far. We're gonna get a city pin for that. See, the funnest beginning. And normally, I'm a little testy with applause because it makes the meeting go longer, but I'm in a good mood tonight. He could do that in Latin. We all know that. So, okay. And if we could have the roll call. Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Sherrillian?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lesser?
Here.
Mayor Holway? Here. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so we are going to begin tonight's ceremonial calendar. And I'd like Iris Nell to come on down.
Her daughter has traveled halfway around the world to see her get this recognition. You better stand up here, Iris, just saying. I really want, I want to recognize Iris. For those of you who don't know, Iris started back in, I think, 2011, a nonprofit called Chemo Sessories. And will you tell us why and what your, you know, mission was or your vision was?
Well, I went through chemo while I was working in the schools. And I realized I had to get up every day, go to school, work with kids. And so I didn't want to look sick. And so I put on a turban, I put on a scarf, I put on jewelry, and I showed up. And then one day, I kind of thought, well, could I do this for somebody else? And almost 24,000 sets later, we have.
24,000 sets. I would see Iris always in the parking lot of Target. And you, I, you looked so cute. I mean, it was always color coordinated, a green turban and a green necklace and earrings and/or whatever color. And I just love it because you took something that, you know, was tough to go through, but you said, I want others to feel good, too. This is a hard time in someone's life. And so what you do is, people like myself, just tonight, donate, you know, jewelry I might not be wearing anymore or scarves. And your volunteers, you have a space. You've got Karen Stifel, you've got Bonnie Schwartz. Wait, wait, wait.
Deb, Debbie.
Debbie.
Deb Scholl.
Scholl. Sorry.
They're on my board.
They're on her board, but they're volunteers. But also, so what they do, first, they have to sort through all this stuff, right? So it does sort out the broken stuff. They have to sort out stuff that may not be appropriate. Then they have to put it into earring piles and then pink earring piles and blue necklaces. And it's kind of heaven, if you ask me. But then they also sit around together and they put these together. And you can see here that these things go together. And then they, they wrap up, I think, with a little stone, like a, you know, a note of hope, and they send them off to people. 24,000 sets, all done by your volunteers and your board, all with donations. They've worked with the National Charity League, Girl Scouts, Seroptimists, Seroptimists Juniors, high school groups, UCLA Cedars, Torrance Memorial. Contact them so that, you know, you can distribute to women there. The Seroptimists provide 100 sets for their cancer comfort bags twice a year. I just think it is really a sterling example of how you can make a difference by doing something that you know how to do and something that matters to you. So on behalf of our city, I want to thank you for what you've contributed. If my colleagues could join me. Here you go. Do you want your board down here, too?
Yeah.
Let's get your board down here.
It's only part of the board.
Can she be seen? Just make sure she's seen.
We'll figure it out. Okay, we'll squeeze. That's the camera.
And the website, oh, it was up there. You can donate your stuff. Okay. So next, if we could have Coach Greg Snyder and the Miracosta Boys Volleyball Team. Come on down. You're gonna come down here, gentlemen. Yeah, gentlemen, come on down here. And, okay. So I'm, where's Greg? You're not Greg.
I'm right here.
Oh, you snuck up. You snuck up behind me. Okay. If you could explain, gentlemen, squeeze in. I will not bite, and I'm, anyway. Would you please tell the good people why you are here tonight? Why these young men are here?
Okay, if you don't, I don't know why I took that. But if you haven't heard about the history of the Miracosta Boys volleyball program, it's a long and historic one. But this year's a little bit different. This year was the first year that we had a state championship for the state of California. Usually, we just ended at regionals. So we're the first team that has ever won the state championship for California. We're also, we were also number one in the nation for all the national polls, so this was a very special team. And we were very happy for the city to recognize us and appreciative of it. So thank you very much.
Wow, that is, that's, it's a still on you. It's truly terrific. And I know, Mike, I already called you out, but you're wearing a shirt from 1996 when you were CIF volleyball champs. Archie, where are you? Archie? Archie was on that team.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So where are my, all right, I need some helps. I need some helps. That makes a lot of sense. I get all nervous. All right. I'm gonna call your name, and you're just gonna raise your hand, and we're gonna bring new certificates to you. It's the least we can do to honor your accomplishment and your hard work, and we're just very impressed. So Thatcher Falbush. Do I embarrass him by saying I remember when you were inside your mom's belly? Okay. Pablo Pasqual. Pablo's not here. Okay, but yay, Pablo. Connor Kaiser.
Kaiser.
Justin Warner. Colby Graham. Okay, Gray Larson. Landon Zapaterino, Zapaterino? Sorry, did I get close? Sean Wallach. Mac Bedner. Joshua Farbman? Not here. But we clap for him, anyway. Carson Knapp? Not here. Wyatt Davis? Akia Ghelan? Not here. Cooper Keen? He's here. Andrew Chapin? Chapin? The fact that so many of you are here during summer really speaks to the commitment of all of you. Yeah, really, really impressed. Teddy Mandelbaum? Okay, except for him. Dylan Peckins? Okay. Grayson? Grayson Bradford? Josh Rubin? Okay. He's here, Josh. Okay, here we got Josh. Daniel Greenberg? Okay. Mateo Ferberger?
Not here.
Enzo Barker? You know, we had a good streak.
Yeah.
Jack Tucker?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Josh. Alex Heinz?
Not here.
Is Devin Busom here?
Not here.
Oh, wow. Okay. So we also have certificates for the coaches. If one of my colleagues could take these from my hands while I read off the names because we know that you did not become the champions that you are with only your dedication and your athletic abilities. So to the head coach, Greg Snyder. The aforementioned Mike Cook. Canyon Seaman?
No.
Not here. Okay, no. And Nick Schleftick?
Schefter.
Schefter? All right. Truly, if I could get my colleagues in here and we'll get a picture, and then we'll honor another Miracosta team. Okay? I'm gonna put this down.
What do you need us to do? Okay, so tell, uh...
Should we go in? I don't think we should go in the back.
No.
Give us a step. Give us a step.
Are we all in? Are we all in?
We're all close. Don't get too busy.
All right. You switch seats in so you can take one better.
We're all in.
There we go. Okay. All right, eyes up here. Take a few. Thank you.
All right, guys. We have some other people to honor. Okay, hold on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So I'm, I need my glasses again. Okay. All right, now we're gonna honor some more folks, so. Okay. Hello? Hello, hello. All right. We had, I'm gonna just say this briefly before I call down the coaches and the young men and women that we're gonna honor, but the 2025 Track and Field team of Miracosta had 29 athletes who qualified for CIF Division One Championship, largest number of athletes in Miracosta's school history for track and field. You young parents are doing a great job. And then of those, 13 athletes qualified for the California State Meet. And this is also the largest number of athletes to qualify. So if I, and I, I have a number of pages here, all of them with different things on them. But I'm gonna get the coaches to come down first, and then we're gonna call all the athletes down. So if I could have Mo Russell, Renee William Smith, Calvin Gambler, Steve Sinheiser, Murray Mead, Hunter Johnson, Rebecca Kelly, Annie Seawright, Natasha Vega, Olivia Vega, Ashley Munoz, JR Tavai, and Jonah Tavai, if you're a coach and you're here. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna give you the mic now. I said, he did not, he said, shoot.
Hello, everyone. I'm Coach Mo Russell, head track and field coach. This is an amazing honor for our program, our athletes. I was also an alumni for Miracosta back in 1996. Don't do the math. And, and also, it's just the see the program, the, the athletes, everything that makes us Miracosta Track and Field evolve over the years has just been awesome. I can't do it without my amazing coaching staff. They'll probably talk later, but it's just, it's just, just honestly, this group of athletes that this year, that we have this year, this team, the reason why we're all here tonight, other than what's on the agenda, is to celebrate their hard work, their dedication, and just their will to be successful. And they're not only doing that on the track, they're doing that in life. So just thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we're gonna, we're gonna call the kids down, but I also am struck by the fact that, you know, we have Miracosta alumni now participating in the program. We have longtime coaches. I mean, Renee, I've known you, you know, forever. You've been there. I mean, we look good, but, you know. You have Mike Cook. You have people who have been dedicated to the program, to the school, for a long time. And that's what creates a culture of excellence. Don't ever take our schools for granted and what they have done there. So, okay. So are my, okay, are my certificate handers ready? So first, we're going to do the CIF Division One, don't laugh at me, man. CIF Division One Championship qualifiers. Would you calm down? A.J. McBean? Alana Clark? Okay. Ashlyn, oh, here comes Alana. Oh, okay. But I'm still gonna read them.
Okay, yes.
Okay, but, okay, thank you. So Ash, Alana Clark, Ashlyn Perone? Ava Crowley? Ava Simone Bush? I believe she's not here, but. Charlie Koch or Coach Koch? Three different ways to pronounce the name. Where, where is he? He's here, right? Is Charlie here? No, I thought he was here. Isaac Faiz Nood? Faiz Nod? Kate Perone? Catherine Maloney? Luke Leonard? Luke's here. Marin Goodfriend? Mia Ritter? Remy Chen? Sadie Wilson? Shane O'Brien? And Skylah Bermanster? Okay. So we're gonna do, we're gonna do a picture with these folks, and then we're gonna do, so scoot in, athletes.
We're gonna scoot in a tick. You guys stay tuned. We're all, you guys are gonna stay down.
Are we ready? Okay.
All right, here we go.
Congratulations. We're gonna keep the coaches standing here. And we're gonna call up the state meet qualifiers, and I am going to read if they had a place here.
Do you want the other kids to stay after?
Oh, what the heck, sure, why not? You're a team, right?
Yeah.
It's a lot of moving pieces. You can tell that, right? Okay, excellent. Okay, so if we could have, is Sonia Mug, Audrey Werhane, Isabella Verella, and Leoni Baker. So these women were in four by 400 relay, and they placed 21st in the state. I called them a little out of order, Nina, sorry. Okay. Yeah, okay, I did that because I wanted to see what team they were on. I'm in trouble.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna do another relay, so it's gonna be a little out of order, and you're gonna be able, you're gonna be just fine. You're just fine. This is the boys' four by 400. And we have Charlie McCarthy, Kayden Enright, Mateo Lu, and Matt Lampkin. I believe there are three of the four, which is a problem in the relay, but it's fine tonight. And these guys are number 16 in the state. So Mr. Lampkin, just stay right next to Nina, the councilman, because you also competed in the 300 hurdles, and this is your number four in California. I mean, that seems hard to me. He's also, he also runs the 110 hurdles, which he was number 28 in California. We have Ian Hansen, who does 800 meters. Is he here? Ian? Tenth in, tenth in the state of California. Okay, do we have Tomet Goruskowski here? Okay. That's, excellent. This young man is a pole vaulter, number three in the state of California. Okay. And I think I'm, let's see, I've got one more. So we have Krish Desai, Ryan Berger, Ian Hansen, and Colin Tarnay, the four by 800 relay. And they also did okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, they're related. Number two in the state. The boys' team finished number eighth overall in California out of 101 teams. So if this isn't worthy of all of our attention and time, I don't know what is. I think I speak for myself when I say I'm in awe of all of you, all of you. And so we want to take another picture. I think, I'm gonna try to get behind y'all because that's how intimidating y'all are.
Maybe I'll have to boy step up. So you're not blocking girls. And I'm gonna be a little mom arranging. Yeah. Can someone just give Nina the camera? She's, okay. You guys squeeze in. Make sure I can see all your faces, you girls, just step up a little bit when I'm gonna see you. Thank you, Ms. Tarnay. All right. There's a Tarnay in the back. I can't really see him. All right, here we go.
Yeah. Aren't you guys glad? So we're gonna give them a chance to go out. If you'd like, if you'd like to leave, we understand, but please try to keep, keep the chitty chat down to a minimum so we can get on with our meeting.
Congratulations. You're so amazing.
Okay. Okay, we're not done. Okay. 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 Why is everyone leaving? We'll give everybody a second to get out. It was a lot to get through, but so worthy, right?
Great. Incredible.
Yeah.
How do you top that?
Yeah, terrific. Wow. Some familiar names in there?
My daughter and my son-in-law found her postgraduates in theater, but I took pictures when I gotta share it with them.
That's great, Dancy, and you can share the news of your grandbaby as well. Okay. All right, so we are going to move on. Let's see. So now it's, I need, we're on the item to approve the agenda. So I need an approval of the agenda, agenda and a waiver of full reading. Let's see.
Does anyone want to pull?
Yeah, if you, do you want to pull something? You can pull something.
Yes.
Hold on, let me move my coup de mons here. It's been moved and seconded as is, moved by Councilman Tarnay, seconded by Councilman, one, seconded by Councilmember Lesser, but I think, was there one that you wanted to pull?
I did. I want to pull number 14.
Okay, hold on.
And I'm not pulling number eight, but I want to register a no vote.
Okay, did you hear that, Madam City Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so would the maker of the motion accept those two, pulling a 14 and a no vote on number eight? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to pull number nine, please.
Pulling number nine. Okey dokey. So now we have, we, the agenda's been moved, seconded with the exception of items nine and 14, and a registered no vote on item number eight. Are we good to vote? Okay.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. Okay. Now let me move. Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Would you like to reconsider?
Uh, no, number 12.
Okay, let's...
Motion to reconsider?
Yeah, motion to reconsider.
Sorry.
That's okay. So now we're reconsidering that.
Number 12? Yeah. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so you have to, yeah.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda with the exceptions of items nine, 12, and 14, with a registered no vote on number eight. Okay? And that's been seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Lesser. There we go. All right. All right.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, great. So we will get to all of that soon, but first, we're gonna, we go to City Council on Community Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events, and I don't know if there's new folks here in the room or maybe watching on Zoom tonight. Just so you, to be very clear, we sort of have two sections, well, we don't sort of, we do. We have two sections. One is for community announcements, like, oh, there's gonna be a fair at American Martyrs or, oh, something like that. It's a one-minute time limit. And then, under public comments, you get a three-minute per person, and I'll explain the function and the technicalities of that. So just so you understand when you get to speak on what kind of topic. So let's go to that one-minute City Council and Community Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events. You can approach the dais.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. On Tuesday, July 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., I would like to invite the adults of the community to join us for a spectacular magic show. Learn about the great Houdini's Secrets of Success, his obsession with magic, and his amazing stunts. Registration is available on our website. And on another note, I want to thank the city of Manhattan Beach for being an amazing and supportive partner over these past five years. Together, we've made many enviable accomplishments, such as being one of the first libraries to safely reopen during the pandemic, increasing our circulation and visitor counts, and implementing a series of high-quality programming for the community. Sadly, this is gonna be my last Manhattan Beach City Council meeting.
Oh, no.
And I am, yeah. So I really appreciate it. This is an amazing opportunity of a lifetime, and a new Manhattan Beach Library manager will...
Yeah, motion to reconsider.
Sorry.
That's okay. So now we're reconsidering that.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with the exceptions of items nine, 12, and 14, with a registered no vote on number eight. Okay, that's been seconded by Mayor Protem Lesser. There we go. All right. All right.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, great. So we will get to all of that soon, but first, we're going to, we go to City Council on Community Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events. And I don't know if there's new folks here in the room or maybe watching on Zoom tonight. Just so you, to be very clear, we sort of have two sections. Well, we don't sort of, we do. We have two sections. One is for community announcements, like, oh, there's going to be a fair at American Martyrs, or, oh, something like that. It's a one-minute time limit. And then, under public comments, you get a three-minute per person. I'll explain the function and the technicalities of that. So just so you understand when you get to speak on what kind of topic. So let's go to that one-minute City Council and Community Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events. You can approach the dais.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. On Tuesday, July 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., I would like to invite the adults of the community to join us for a spectacular magic show, learn about the great Houdini's secrets of success, his obsession with magic, and his amazing stunts. Registration is available on our website. And on another note, I want to thank the city of Manhattan Beach for being an amazing and supportive partner over these past five years. Together, we've made many enviable accomplishments, such as being one of the first libraries to safely reopen during the pandemic, increasing our circulation and visitor counts, and implementing a series of high-quality programming for the community. Sadly, this is going to be my last Manhattan Beach City Council meeting.
Oh, no.
And I am, yeah. So I really appreciate it. This is an amazing opportunity of a lifetime, and a new Manhattan Beach library manager will be introduced to you at the next meeting on August 5th. And I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh, for everything you've done. You'll be missed, and good luck to you. Okay, other comments? Or announcements, I should say.
Good evening, City Council, Maureen McBride. I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Business and Professional Organization. Just want to let you know that we are doing a little throwback to 1985 next Thursday, July 22nd. It's actually the 40th anniversary of the Downtown Business and Professional Organization, which is quite remarkable that that's happening and that it's been so many years. But in case the public doesn't know, we're one of those organizations that brings you the Holiday Open House, brings you the sidewalk sales, supports all your schools and philanthropic organizations. And a lot of the businesses, both restaurants as well as retail, are going to kick off a little party in their businesses celebrating 1985. So if you see a lot of us dressed up in neon and leg warmers and all that fun stuff, that's what's happening. So we'd love for the community to come down and support all of us and really enjoy a nice evening.
You know, I had braces last in 1985.
So it's a throwback on her.
It's definitely a throwback, yes. Okay, other public announcements, upcoming events? Oh, Andrew.
Hi there, I'm Andrew Boris. I'm the Culture Arts Coordinator for the City of Manhattan Beach. I have two brief announcements for upcoming events. We'd like to invite the community to join us this week for two free Shakespeare by the Sea performances at Polywog Park Amphitheater. They're both going to be at 7:00 p.m. On Thursday, we're going to have the play As You Like It, and on Friday, we're going to have Julius Caesar. Bring your family, friends. It's a big, awesome, public picnic event for a night of theater. My other announcement is for inviting the community to the annual community exhibition. We're going to have an opening reception next Friday on July 25th, and it's going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. for three hours. Thank you.
That's such a cool logo patch thing. Did you guys design that?
We did design that in-house, and there may be some given out at the event as well. So we'll see you there.
Well done, thank you so much, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm going to follow up. It's my annual visit from Hermosa Beach, representing Shakespeare by the Sea. I'm on the board, and this is our 28th season. And Manhattan Beach was one of the first five cities that started touring 25 years ago. We've been here every year except for the two COVID years, and we thank the city of Hermosa Beach. First of all, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council, thank you, staff, and all the residents of Manhattan Beach for always supporting Shakespeare by the Sea. I can tell you, we had over 500 people last Wednesday and Thursday night, both nights for both As You Like It and Julius Caesar. And I'm challenging Manhattan Beach, but I don't think it's a challenge, because I know we can always count that kind of audience in Polywog Park. What I will challenge you is that both Hermosa Beach and Redondo Beach have fully funded our performances. We depend on contributions and support from all of you so we can present it free. So please step up, come buy some t-shirts, coffee cups, raffle items, and support Shakespeare by the Sea so it'll come to you again next year. Thank you so much, Manhattan Beach.
And hopefully the sound system will work.
Oh, yes, no, I believe it. Well, you guys are very.
You got my number.
You jumped in and made sure it worked, thank you.
Yep. Hello, Archie.
By the way, that '96 team was better than this one, but... Just kidding, that was a great team. Okay, so I, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Archie Sherman with the Parks and Rec Department, here to announce a couple upcoming events we have, one of them being this weekend. We have the 57th Annual Manhattan Beach Open Tennis Tournament. The tournament will take place Thursday through Sunday. There'll be both double pairings and single players and recreational levels, as well as aspiring professional athletes in the USTA sanctioned open divisions. Matches will take place at Live Oak Park in Maricosta, with the divisional finals being held at the Manhattan Country Club on Sunday, which is free to public. And then, a couple weeks after that, we have the annual, it's the 62nd Annual International Surf Festival. We have the schedule up there with all the events. It's again a partnership between Manhattan Beach and Hermosa and Torrance and Redondo. Most of the events taking place here in Manhattan and Hermosa. So 62nd Annual International Surf Festival will kick off on Friday, August 1st, for the Charlie Sakey legendary six-man volleyball tournament. Additional events throughout the festival include surfing and body surfing championships, the peer-to-peer swim, and the paddleboard races. We'll close the weekend out on Sunday with the Junior Six-Man Volleyball Tournament. And again, the schedule is there. There's more information on their website, which is surffestival.org, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, other announcements of upcoming events? Okay, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, so again, we're going to go to public comments, which is three minutes per person. You may provide comment on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, including items on the agenda. But if you do speak now for three minutes on something that's on the agenda later, you, this is your only chance to speak. You don't speak again, as we say, not another by the apple. So, and just know that if you're talking, if you're speaking about something that isn't on the agenda, we will not be able to opine or comment on it. So you may talk about porta-potties at Polywog Park, but it's not on the agenda, and we won't sit up here and say, yes, they should be cleaned. Okay, so just understand that. I didn't think that was controversial. Anyway, just understand that. So you get three minutes, so please approach the dais. And are there cards for them to fill out? Are they, okay, all right, take it away.
Good evening, my name is Kristi Hogan. I'm 32-year resident in Manhattan Beach. I've come down here to talk about item 23, which is kind of buried in the back of your agenda. Joe and Steve asked that this item be put on. It caught my eye because it uses kind of manipulative language. It purports to be about ensuring equal medical coverage for the five of you. Now, I know that the city offers equal benefits to each of the council members, so I got the sense there might be something up. Now, people with other publicly funded health care, like through CalPERS or Medicare, might not qualify to also take advantage of the city's generous council benefits. But that's not an issue of equality. All individuals are going to make choices about the, from the menu of options that they have personally. So in that context, it sure starts to look like Steve is asking the city attorney and the city staff and the city council to expend resources to get him more benefits than he's eligible for. And the worst part about this, and this is what brought me down here, is that it's not being addressed in a manner that is consistent with your sunshine policy or with transparency standards. After I heard the June 17th meeting, I thought it was odd that nobody was surprised by Steve's request, and from that, I suspected that maybe you had had a heads-up about the substance outside of a meeting, which is a no-no, you know. So I made a public records request, and I want to share with you, what I got back was three pages. Now, this is just shameful when the topic is council member compensation. You can't hide that, this is taxpayer money. So we're here tonight with this vaguely kind of Orwellian reference on the agenda to ensure equal benefits, but instead, a more honest explanation of the item might have sounded something like this. Steve's not eligible for all the city council benefits because he already has the executive retiree benefits from the city, and Steve wants to discuss ways that the city can compensate him more, and Joe supports that, but you can still save yourselves. Amy and David and Nina, I am urging you to vote no. Don't allow this to go any further. You have been provided no information to justify committing any further resources to figuring out how to do a workaround on Steve's other publicly funded health care benefits. And let me just add a couple of quick points. Long experience has shown me that the day that you start feeling like the city that you serve is not giving you enough back is the day that you might want to start rethinking your desire to serve. And finally, each council member is offered equal benefits. So Steve, the word that you're looking for is not equality, it's equity. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Michael Jenkins, longtime resident. I just want to also comment on item 23 and follow from Kristi's comments with some additional comments. As she noted, no reasonable person reading the staff report on item 23 would have the slightest idea what it's about. It is devoid of any substantive information. What are the medical benefits? Why are they unequal? For whom are they unequal? Why are they unequal? What would it cost for them to be equal? Nothing, there's nothing in there. I don't see how, without that information, any member of the public could possibly intelligently comment, or unless you have information that we don't have, how you could make a decision whether to go forward with this item for the next, for the next stage. It's just not transparent, and it's really not adequate. Unlike the rest of you, as Kristi noted, Steve is a PERS annuitant, and as a retired city employee, he receives a generous pension and medical benefits at our Manhattan Beach taxpayer expense. So I can only surmise that Steve is making this request because there must be some rule that Steve is barred from double dipping. In other words, taking benefits both as a city retiree and as an elected council member. I don't know, and the reason I don't know is because the staff report doesn't tell me anything. Okay? Now, Steve, nobody forced you to run for city council. You chose to run. You campaigned saying that you wanted to give back to this community after coming to love Manhattan Beach, working here for so many years. We're now six months in, and now you want the city to incur a cost, I don't know how much, to feather your own nest. Honestly, being on the city council is a community service. It's not a job. You had a job with the city of Manhattan Beach, and you retired from that job, and now you get a very expensive pension, which includes medical benefits at our expense. Double dipping is just not a good look. It's unseemly, it looks greedy. And Joe, you're supporting it. I have no idea if what Steve wants is legal. The staff report says no legal analysis necessary, but the redacted memo that Kristi showed you suggests that the city attorney has had exchanges back and forth, long ones, with Steve. So some legal resources have already been expended on this. Have they? What's been your conclusion, Quinn? Is Steve bringing this here because he's not accepting your legal advice? I urge all of you, especially the three of you, not to take this any further. Kill it now. Thank you.
Okay, are there other public comments? You can go ahead.
Hi, I'm Victoria Peters. Hi, I'm Victoria Peters, and I've been here since 1977. And, sorry, I'm sort of nervous. And I remember when the city allowed people to start fencing in their easements. And so that's mostly what our neighbors have done. And now the city wants to take back the people that have decided, like, I decided that I wanted a parking pad rather than to fence my easement. And now there's a big parking problem, and I think it's disgruntled people that have fenced in their easement, have multiple cars, and they don't use their, they don't use their garage for parking. They're too small, the garages, and they use them for storage. So, you know, does this sound fair to you? I mean, I chose a parking pad rather than an easement. I can't go over and sit in their easement, but they want to come and park in my parking spot. And, you know, there's, Manhattan Beach is really an old city. There's two people that live down the street, they don't even have garages. Their little easement is the only place that they can park. And, you know, and the city wants to take it away. And so, I mean, I see they're across from a condo that has multiple cars, and when they have to move their cars, I see their cars on the street. So, you know, I don't think it's fair to take away our parking pads. You know, I mean, there's so many ordinances that aren't enforced. Leaf blowers for one, and, you know, like keeping your trash behind your gates. I mean, there's a lot like that. And, you know, I think that, I just don't think it's fair. And, I mean, I don't think that you would think it's fair either, really. I mean, if I chose parking over fencing in my easement. And, I mean, the laws have just gone back and forth so many times. And... I don't want a big red stripe parked in front of my parking place inviting people to park on it, you know? So, anyway, thanks for that consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm also here to join Victoria. Ron Chavers, longtime resident, 32nd Street. We also chose to put in a parking pad on our house, and it's always been, you know, available to anybody who wants to park on it. But now I feel like the city is coming into the neighborhood and advertising that anybody should come and park on the parking pads. It seems strange to me that the letter that came out last week was directed only at the Sand Dune neighborhood, even though there are parking pads all over the city. It seems discriminatory, selective, and maybe not even legal, that my yard could be used by, my easement could be used by somebody, while my neighbor who planted a yard, you know, are people from Sand Dune Park going to come up and put beach chairs in people's front yards and be able to sit there and enjoy the afternoon by the beach? So it's a bit of a problem that the letter didn't really call out any legal reasoning behind why this is being done now. I mean, I understand that the city is under a lot of duress with parking, but to go after the people who tried to help the situation and make them the scapegoat for it doesn't seem correct to me now. So what I'm asking for is that the city review this letter, use a little bit more transparency about the thinking and the process behind this, because it does not seem very well thought out, the letter, and I think it sent a lot of worry through a lot of people. How is it going to be enforced? Is there going to be a meter maid coming by with a chalk stick telling you, you've been there for 72 hours after we've used this parking pad for 30 years? It just doesn't seem very well thought out. And I think before any striping is done or any further markings, I mean, all of a sudden, I have a little pee outside of my house now. So it's kind of obnoxious, and we'd like to know more about the legality of it, because personally, I'll plant a yard because there's a parking space outside of my pad. So you can technically, if I park on the pad, somebody can park outside of me and block me in. So is my pad a legal place for somebody to park? If somebody comes in and parks on my pad, I can park outside of them, park in my driveway, and block them in, and they can no longer leave. So I'm not sure why some of these pads are being called out, because they don't really seem like a legal place for somebody to park. Anyway, I think it needs more thought. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you for your input.
Hello. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for your service to the city. This past weekend, on a beautiful day, beach day in the middle of July, the city closed down 1.3 miles of road along North Valley Drive, Ardmore Drive, and 15th Street. Took hundreds of parking spaces offline, disrupted traffic patterns, and inconvenienced local residents and beachgoers. Was it for a beloved and well-run, well-attended local community event like the Hometown Fair or the Grand View Gator Run? No. It was for a destination bike race that draws about 500 riders from 15 states and a few foreign countries to Manhattan Beach who descend on our area for the weekend. They consume the limited available parking, and they ride their event. I say "their" event, not "our" event, because according to the data that's been provided by the race organizers to our city officials in past years, typically only about a handful of adult racers in the race, roughly 1% are from Manhattan Beach. And fewer than 30 kids, less than 20% of the riders in the kids' race are from Manhattan Beach. So... So, when city council, or when the city of Manhattan Beach considers a special event application, it weighs the benefits versus the impacts of a special event, right? Every special event, as we know, brings adverse impacts to the area. It includes traffic issues, parking issues, trash, inconvenience to the local residents, burden on city staff, and costs that are often borne by the city. However, the benefits to the Manhattan Beach community from most of our special events include incredible resident involvement and engagement, contributing to our sense of community, our hometown feel, positive impact to local businesses, and support for the fundraising efforts of local charities and our local foundations. So when the city determines that the benefits outweigh the impacts, it approves a special event, as it should, like the Hometown Fair, the Grand View Gator Run. But I ask, when was the last time the city asked, "What's the benefit to the Manhattan Beach community to host this annual event, the Grand Prix"? Why does the city continue to approve special event permits every year for this event? Why does the city subsidize the cost of this event? And why does the city allow this event to be run in the middle of summer, our busiest time in the city of Manhattan Beach, whereas most of the special events are scheduled during off-seasons? My final question for you. If the city council were evaluating a first-time special event permit for an event such as this from organizers of a bicycle race that would include just a handful of Manhattan Beach participants and hundreds of riders from elsewhere, would you approve that application today? Thank you for your service.
Thank you, guys. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Kelly Strowman, Executive Director for the Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association. I'd like to start by first thanking staff, Public Works, ALI, the fire department for yesterday, so collectively showing up. Very quickly, to a concern that we have with Southern California Edison and the 100-block south side, all the restaurants down there ended up needing repairs overnight, and I think everybody's collaboration usurped and prevented what could have been a very big problem electrically and possibly a fire. So, thank you very much to everybody that participated in that. That collaboration, I'd like to bring to my next thought that I'm bringing to you tonight, which is food trucks. I know it's dominated my texts, my emails, my conversations, my hours of my day, as it has you and a lot of other staff in the city, since Yeasty Boys Bagel Truck arrived on the scene just a few weeks ago. Food trucks present unfair competition to the locally-owned, year-round restaurants, boutiques, and cafes that are the foundation of downtown Manhattan Beach and are the very heart and soul of the city. These brick-and-mortar businesses make long-term commitments and investments in our community, paying rent, elevated parking permit fees, trash fees, signage fees, 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 fees. They hire locally, they contribute locally, they pay taxes, and take great pride in maintaining storefronts that support a walkable and vibrant environment. In contrast, food trucks often operate with lower overhead, minimal community ties, and little accountability, yet draw from the very same customer base that your beloved businesses do. Beyond economic fairness, there are safety, legal, and operational concerns. The very first part of Municipal Code 3.68.030 for mobile food trucks says, "A mobile food vendor may locate its vehicle in the public right away as long as the mobile food vendor adheres to the following standards." There are 11 standards. I'm going to read one, the very first one, A. "The vending vehicle is in full compliance with all parking and all vehicle code provisions which apply to the location at which it is parked." I really shouldn't have to go any further. The B, "The vending vehicle does not obstruct pedestrian or vehicular traffic." We all know, we've seen the lines. Any food truck usually has long lines. It is our belief that allowing food trucks in this city is really deterring from...
Oh, no. Oh, no. Paramedic. Paramedic. We're going to take a recess.
Today, we're gonna find out if we can do live and shag it.
Peggy says, can we go live?
We're live, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we are going back into open session.
We are in a public comments section. And Kelly Strowman, did you want to, I think you had like thirty seconds left. Can we, Martha, can we, Madam City Clerk, can we figure that out? Okay.
Thank you. Again, Kelly Strowman, Executive Director for the Downtown Business Association. Taking a deep breath. We all heart and pray for him to be okay. Okay, I will finish up. I will wrap up my commentary about food trucks in downtown Manhattan Beach. The city of Manhattan Beach began enforcing oversized vehicle parking regulations on February 1st, 2025. These rules, along with local zoning and business policies, are essential to maintaining the safety, access, and aesthetic integrity of our coastal town. I urge you to look at these matters immediately, bring them back to council as quickly as you can, TurboTrack it, not FastTrack, TurboTrack, and please bring back some options to quickly.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Okay, come on down, talk about anything, mostly.
Good evening, Mayor Holworth and council members. My name is Rick Smith. I am a longtime, proud Manhattan Beach resident, forty-five years now and counting. Until today, I never felt the need to come and address the city council about anything. Sorry. I'm here this evening to express my objection to the proposed parking changes for parking pads that was in a letter that we received from the city traffic engineer. We live on Thirty-first Street, and we have a parking pad that appears to be included in these proposals, which we understand may include stenciling, public parking, and enforcing a seventy-two-hour time limit. We, when we purchased our property fourteen years ago, we did not, we inherited an encroachment permit, and we've abided by the terms of that permit during that time. We have never had any complaints or concerns expressed by any of our neighbors about the parking situation in our, in front of our house, and we don't see any reason why the city is making these proposals now. We assume that it's probably to ensure more public access to parking, but we have concerns about this. We have safety concerns, we have glass doors that are right up against where the parking pad is. We are concerned that if a van were to park there, it could be cover for a break-in attempt. We also are concerned about blocking access to our house. In fact, this has happened before, and the mail people won't deliver our mail when it's blocked. And we, minor as it may seem, don't want to really clean up other people's oil spills on the parking pad. So if it's, the city is really concerned about increasing parking, I would submit that this proposal is likely to decrease parking. If you were to go forward with this and want to stencil, we would move to go through the permit process to put in a yard like many of our neighbors have to eliminate the problem. So I would hope, whether this had been considered or not, that it would be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Michael Zistlis, downtown business owner and resident. Two issues, first is the power going out. Great job for building, Public Works showed up, fire showed up. Power went out on Sunday night at 5:00 PM for Rockin' Fish. It was a three-phase leg that had melted and corroded away on the transformer behind Shellback. I couldn't get anybody from Edison, I had no contact at Edison. We had a relationship with Goble, I think his name was, before, Steve Goble, something like that.
That was a long time ago.
Scott Goble.
I've been here a long time. And, but we got nowhere, then I did call Kelly, she called Public Works, they called somebody at Edison finally. They just came in and said, okay, we're shutting down the power in ten minutes, and they shut down our restaurants. And then they came at maybe midnight and fixed it, and it's back operational today. One of the issues is, a year ago, the exact same thing happened, the exact same cable burned out. And the reason is, they use aluminum, because they have aluminum on their truck to repair things. But the guy says aluminum only lasts a year. So I'd like Public Works and Edison maybe to work together to come up with some copper that they can have maybe stored at our public yard to fix emergency fixes, because the one-year fix, I don't think is a good thing. And then they always say, file a claim, remember that one? I filed the claim a year ago with Edison for the last one, and I've received not a penny or a reply from Edison. On a second note on food trucks, I just want to reiterate a few things. They pay whopping $300 business license fee, okay? So if you're a plumber and you do business in this town, you pay $300. If you're a contractor and you do business, just work in somebody's house, you pay a $300 fee. I just want to let you know that the sales tax that they generate does not stay in Manhattan Beach. It all goes to where their home office is, wherever their mailing address is. The other thing is, they do violate the parking with an oversized vehicle, and they get three tickets a day. If I got three violations a day in my restaurant, you would yellow tag, red tag me, shut me down. So I would just presume that we should just pull the, not a permit, it's a business license, because they violate every day. But if you are under pressure from Sacramento to have food trucks, there's some great places in Manhattan Beach to have them. Pollywog Park, Roosters Beach, you know, we can have them and have some type of a lottery system where you have two or three spots and people sign up. But the idea of somebody setting up a business on our streets is just not the right thought. So thank you for your attention to this. Cheers.
Hi, Ray Joseph, Nebra points, because I'm gonna add on to a few of theirs. First of all, SB seventy-nine going through the assembly, and they can build seventy-five-foot buildings within quarter-mile of a transit stop, hence bus stop, and half-mile, they can build fifty-five feet. But if you throw in, like, density bonus, builder's remedy, other things on top of that, they can go even much higher possibly. So there's a lot of warning signs on this thing, we've really gotta fight this thing. I did an overlay of Manhattan Beach, pretty much covers all of Manhattan Beach, because everybody lives about within a half-mile of a bus stop. There's only a couple, and guess what? If they want to build over there, they'll just move the bus stop. It's very simple. So we gotta, we gotta fight SB seventy-nine as hard as we can, get our assembly members, Ben Allen and Emily Surtche to fight these things. It'd really be very helpful. Going to the Edison thing, about maybe a month or so ago, we had a big power outage. My refrigerator dishwasher both broke on the same day as the power outage. What are the odds? We need to do something about upgrading our system, and I'd love to, you know, get fast-track of undergrounding so we can get rid of these, you know, because it's, let's face it, the marine weather is not good for metal. So if we can get it underground, that would help quite a bit. Now, if you're looking for parking, I know where to get a lot of parking for very little effort. Have you been on marine, from marine to Rosecrans on Manhattan Ave? All the properties to the east are perpendicular to the street, which means they all have garages. So the east side of the street, there's no parking. The west side of the street, the properties are parallel to the beach, and majority of those properties, their garages are on the alleys. If that parking stripper moves seven feet to the east, move the parking to the other side where there's parking. You pick up, I think, about sixty spots. So that's a real cheap, easy way of picking up a lot of parking. Just move the double-yellow line seven feet and put the parking on the west side, and you'll pick up a lot of parking. Just my two cents, thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Any other public comments, or I see one, and then I know we have Beach Cities Health District can come down afterwards?
Good evening. I just, sorry, I've never done this before.
Go for it.
Hi, how are you? I'm Matt Ramondas, I represent Yeasty Boys Food Trucks, we sell bagels. This is my first time here, but I wanted to start, I just had to quickly write some notes down outside and put my thoughts together on what I was gonna say. But we want to thank the overall community for the hundreds, if not thousands, of positive engagements we've had so far. Lots of sentimental notes, social media engagements. Have also appreciated the communication and willingness to engage, especially from Chief Johnson and Ms. Strowman, who made some great recommendations to us over the last couple of weeks on how to address some of these issues to make sure that we could be contributing to the prestige of this community. And she also made some great suggestions on where we should be parking in order to kind of keep the peace, and has really been on our side this whole time, seemingly, from our communications with her. We've tried to approach this situation with lots of thoughtfulness and kindness and polish, and despite being a food truck business, we do have a larger operation, are widely known in LA, and really do our best to be respectful of all the communities that we're in. It sometimes is suggested that there's not overhead within the food truck business. I want to let you know that there is a significant overhead and that we reinvest a very, very significant part of our profitability just in that infrastructure to make sure that we can remain at the utmost standards of every community. Just a quick note that I was thinking about while I was sitting over there is, we have paid, we have been cited, and we find, I think we've paid $1,259 over ten, twelve days, which I think is about $104 a day, which if you actually take prorated per-square-foot amount, we actually pay what would be the market rent or more in square foot, that actually goes directly to the city, not to a landlord who then pays a 1.3% property tax flow-through to the city. So on the financial side, there's, there's some merit to having our business operate, especially in the current environment. We want to keep an open dialogue, we would be more than happy to have an open forum and talk to everybody about, you know, how we can participate in this community. We've tried our best to be kind and lead with kindness, even despite a few rogue citizens who have contributed to the difficult parking situation at, you know, five X that we have by intentionally blocking up spots, just to prove a point. We've approached it by communicating openly, trying to get out ahead of everything, and really being thoughtful and with open ears. So just wanted to thank you all for your service and hope that we can continue this relationship in a positive and open communicative way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Come on down. Madam Assistant City Clerk, we have the Beach Cities Health District presentation coming.
Good evening, Ally Stewart from Beach Cities Health District. I'm the Chief Partnerships and Innovation Officer here on behalf of our CEO, Tom Backley, and our Board of Directors to give you a brief update on our healthy living campus and what's ahead in the coming months. So we wanted to share some of the positive steps that we've been working on over the past several months, completing a bike path, that's really a connector to North and South Redondo. We see a lot of utilization on that with Redondo students going to and from. Also working on ensuring that the green space on the campus stays present on the neighborhood off of Diamond Street, so we can maintain what they've been seeing for a very long time. We're also working on relocating our Center for Health and Fitness. This is our fitness facility that's currently located on the second floor of our Beach Cities Health District facility. It will remain on the campus as the rest of the campus becomes redeveloped and will be part of the overall healthy living campus imprint. We're also working with a program called Program of All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly, which is really a one-stop shop for older adults to get all of the care that they might need while helping maintain them safely in their homes. So we're excited to bring that component of the healthy living campus forward, and again, remaining in that 510 building, the building that you see on the right when you pull into the campus. And then another update, as we move forward with All Cove Beach Cities, which I'll provide a brief update on, is we're about almost two-thirds of the way to receiving the funding for the permanent location of All Cove Beach Cities. We're actively capital fundraising so we can keep that facility on the campus and really facilitate more intergenerational programming on the campus. We have lots of great partners that have helped to make that possible. South Bay Families Connected, a group that was started right here in Manhattan Beach, also working really closely with our South Bay School Districts to make sure that we make sure these mental health services are available for young people in our community. Recently, just at the end of last month, we did issue a request for expression of interest for the overall campus footprint, and really this wipes the slate clean to see what is potential to be on that campus, what could the potential be to bring innovative ideas for the campus. Opportunities might include residential care for the elderly, senior affordable housing, medical office, adaptive reuse for a hospital, anything that's within the scope of services currently permitted under the California Healthcare District law. So really guiding those efforts are alignment with our district mission and vision, meeting the ongoing community health needs. This really is the third iteration of Beach Cities Health District and how we're able in how we're able to serve the community. First, when the three cities came together back in the 50s to establish the South Bay Hospital District, and then more recently, in the late 90s, when our board opted to focus on prevention and early intervention instead of waiting for people to be sick. So we're on the cusp of the next innovation for the Health District, and we're really looking to the community to provide feedback on what that might include. We want to make sure that we can continue to provide free programs and services to the community, partnerships with school, law enforcement, fire, other social services that we provide to older adults right here in Manhattan Beach. But also keeping some of the parameters in line for consideration. So this proposal is open through the month of July. We really want to solicit ideas from the communities, developers. We've done site walks for those who might be interested in bringing a new idea to the Beach Cities so we can really make sure that our facilities are reflective of who we are as a Health District and what this community needs in the next phase of our, of our existence. So you can see here, just to orient yourself to the campus, so the two buildings in orange, those will remain. Those are longer-term ground leases that we currently have. Providence is the primary tenant on the building on the left. Then we've got a variety of uses, imaging, other medical office in the 510 building. That will come back to Beach Cities Health District in 2030. And so that's where it's planned to have the Center for Health and Fitness and the Program of All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly. The white part in the middle that you see here, the old South Bay Hospital, both towers, that is the area that's under consideration for the request for expression of interest. So that includes the Silverado Tower that you see on the right of the roundabout, as well as the building on the left that has a lot of different medical office use, the fitness facility. That's where All Cove is currently located on the fourth floor. So all that is under consideration for ideas from the community about redeveloping this centerpiece of the campus. And the dirt lot on the, on the top part of the campus you see there, that's what's slated to be the permanent home of All Cove Beach Cities. We really hope we can do the capital fundraising so we can keep that community benefit co-located with a lot of other health services on the campus. But that was also included as an ad alternate for a developer to potentially come in if there were other locations that they might want to consider to have All Cove on the campus or even to move it to another location within the campus. That would be something that we'd consider as well. So that request for expression of interest is currently open. And we encourage community partners, developers, others, even if they only want to consider a portion of the campus, to submit that expression of interest so we can have continued conversations with them. Just a few quick program updates while I'm here. Really, with All Cove Beach Cities, we've been open for about two and a half years now. We've had more than 13,000 visits by young people from across the South Bay. So Manhattan Beach, I believe, is the third highest utilizer behind Redondo Beach and Torrance, and we really think that's because of proximity. We can see that more than 230 Manhattan Beach young people have been able to receive free services. Again, this is something that we're hoping to keep on the campus. An alternative would be the Adventureplex facility here in Manhattan Beach. If we're not able to raise the additional capital dollars, that could be something that we could consider as well in collaboration with the city. So really thankful for all the support that we've received from the cities, from the school districts to help make this possible. We're continuing to work with the state to figure out how we make this sustainable into the future so we can continue to offer these services, very much needed services in the Beach Cities. And then finally, we wanted to acknowledge the partnership that we've had with you all around opioid prevention through the settlement dollars that the city has received. So really working a lot in collaboration with schools and the community at large to do more awareness and education around opioids, fentanyl in the community. So training middle schoolers, high schoolers, staff, families on what to look for and also to be prepared. So on the upper right, you'll see a Maricosta student who was featured in one of the videos. They remade a county substance use video to make it more appealing for young people. And so really having young people being the ambassadors for prevention in their community. And I think another thing we've enjoyed partnering with you all on is really awareness around naloxone distribution, the life-saving opioid reversal medication. We've distributed a lot of kits throughout the community, including at the Hometown Fair. And so we wanted the community at large to know that it is a resource. We're a distribution site at All Cove Beach Cities. So any member of the community can stop by and receive one of those kits. And we'd be happy to provide any additional that you might want here at City Hall or through police and fire. So that's all that I have. And thank you for the opportunity to give a brief update.
Thank you, Ally. Yes, that was a little boring, it's three minutes, but it is a subject of great interest. So appreciate that. Are there other public comments, though? If you have a public comment here in chambers, because I'm going to turn to Zoom.
No requests on Zoom.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I could just have the city attorney clarify item number 23, that, you know, we followed the proper protocol to put something on the agenda.
Sure.
Yes, with respect to the process, I mean, that's the whole three-step process. The first step is if you get one other council member to join in on placing this on the agenda, but there's no work done by staff. And it's a bare-bones staff report, because we're not going to do any work unless there's three council members that want to pursue the item. So it's totally consistent with the Brown Act.
Okay, all right. Okay, and that may be something for a future agenda item that I may want to talk about, is that three-step process, but we could talk about that with future agenda. Thank you for the clarification.
Good night.
Okay, so public.
Madam Mayor, sorry, we did have a last-minute raised hand on Zoom.
All right.
Public comments.
Bring it on. I mean, welcome.
Hi, my name is Laura James. I live in the Dan section on 29th and Alma. And my comment relates to parking. You know, I've noticed that we get more and more dense with lots of lots getting divided. And what I've seen with a lot of our neighbors is that they're using that space in their garages for other things, as a den, as, you know, a place for kids to gather, whatever it may be. And they're not parking there. And so I think, you know, as you look at this issue, you should take that into account and make sure that whatever is done is very consistent and addresses that issue. The other thing we've noticed specifically with our parking pad is neighbors inviting friends to use it when they go to LAX. And we've actually seen situations where a neighbor is moving a car once a day right back into the spot, including over a recent holiday weekend, which just cut down on parking. It should not be the parking spot for LAX. That's, that's all I have at the moment, but I urge the city to do a deeper, deeper dive on this issue rather than just move ahead as currently planned. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad we got that in. Are there any other, before I close, public comments?
No additional requests.
Okay, thank you. So closing public comments, thank you for the clarification. Moving on to the consent calendar, which we have pulled items number nine, 12, and 14. So I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items nine, 12, 14, and a no vote on number eight from one person. Okay, so we, Councilmember Franklin has moved approval and Councilwoman Ternay has seconded. Call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so item number nine was pulled by Councilmember Franklin. Would you like a staff report? Do you want to ask questions? How would you like to proceed?
Just want some clarification of the services provided. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, this is a very important part of our enforcement and downtown, you know, in the downtown area where there's a challenge with parking and the like. And I just wanted to have a brief description of what this, these services will be providing and how that impacts our police force, their ability to patrol even more, because they're not doing these kind of tasks, so.
Okay, absolutely. Councilmember Franklin, I'm Kelly Benjamin. I am the lieutenant overseeing the traffic safety bureau, as well as our special events bureau currently. And so CSC actually does a lot of different jobs for us, jobs that otherwise would be handled by police officers or community service officers. So over the summer, you probably see them in our lots, so specifically El Porto. They're in the Bruce's Beach lots, they're in our Pier lots. They actually block off traffic for us when it starts getting too busy and too congested. At MBB and Ocean, also MBB and Man Ave. And they could even go up to MBB and Highland. And the reason for that is it gets congested, it turns into gridlock. Nobody can go anywhere. We get a lot of complaints as a city. So to alleviate that, we have CSC out there doing that for us. If they were not there, it would be our community service officers going out there. And what that means is those CS, or those CSOs are not available to assist our officers with issues that occur throughout the city. They aren't able to do parking enforcement throughout the city. They really just get stuck on a standing post. But that's not all that CSC does. CSC also helps do event security for all of our special events. So that would be our fireworks, our Hometown Fair, the Grand Prix, the MBO, Sixth Man, just about every special event that we have here. If it has an impact to the city that involves traffic, us having to close down lots, parking lots being permitted specifically for that event, CSC is there handling that for us. And then also, they handle our staffing over at our concerts in the park. They don't supplant our police officers. So it's the police officer's job to enforce the law. CSC are unarmed. They call us, and usually there's an officer nearby or on scene working that event also. They call us to handle any enforcement. But really what they do is they take that pressure off the police officers so we can focus on what we do best, which is enforcing the law, ensuring everybody remains safe in the city.
Great, well, thank you. That's, I just wanted to make our residents aware, when they see them out there, that it's a very important job that they're doing and supplementing our enforcement, so.
Yeah, we appreciate the ability to have them out there. We appreciate the council looking into this for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from other colleagues before I ask the public if they have any questions? Is that, that's good for you, Councilmember Franklin? Thank you, Officer Benjamin. Lieutenant, lieutenant?
It's okay, lieutenant.
Sorry. Okay, I think we're good. We're good. How about, are there any public comments? How about on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, so closing public comments. I need a motion and a second for item number nine for CSC services. It's been moved by Councilmember Ternay and seconded by Mayor Protem for another meeting. Closer.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Item number 12. And was this, was this you, Councilmember Shirleyan?
No.
Who is this?
This was me.
That was you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I just really have a question on one part of this. If you may, and that is, pardon me. On page 370 of the report, there's a table of the additional expenses that are being requested. And specifically, one is, so it's on, it's in Amendment Number Five, Exhibit B5, approved fee schedule on page 370. And it's the task number two, which is a SIM traffic analysis for the existing plus up to three scenarios for a cost of $28,440. So I would just like to have that explained a little bit more, because that's a lot of money. I don't think, either as a resident or my time on council, I've seen a SIM traffic analysis, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Ted Saman. I'm your interim public works director.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm not going to have a whole lot of history in terms of what the scenarios are. I do have a lot of history in conducting these kinds of analyses in the past. It is something that is used to simulate traffic. But with that, I'm actually going to go ahead and introduce Gilbert Gamboa, our acting city engineer. He may have more insight on the three scenarios that may be run.
Thank you, Ted. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Amendment Number Five is dealing with adding a traffic simulation analysis to the existing contract with KOA for the Manhattan Beach Boulevard Pacific Avenue intersection improvement. We tried to absorb the 20, the cost in the existing, in the existing contract, but there is actually, so it's actually, it's not just 28,000, but it's just an overage of 20,000 that we're asking for, for the amendment to do the traffic signal or do the traffic analysis there, the simulation. So the simulation is going to be helpful to confirm which alternate, which alternative is going to operate most efficiently at that intersection. Rather than bringing back to council plans and specs that we have to describe on that end of it, we'll be able to actually model the scenarios, the existing conditions, and then the proposed alternatives that we want to implement and see if they're, they're actually going to make a difference there on that end of it. So we're building upon council's previous decisions when we've heard this. And in a nutshell, on that, over the last five years, there's been about four accidents there on that end of it. One of them did include a pedestrian collision on that end of it. So it will help staff kind of pinpoint if these solutions are going to work.
I'm sorry, how many years?
Five years.
Four accidents?
Five years, it's been four accidents.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, does anyone else have any further questions for staff? Okay, thank you. I'll open up to the public. Thank you. We also had our traffic engineer, Eric Zandvliet, up there, ready to go, but we didn't need to ask you. Do we have any comments on this item, item number 12? Okay, how about on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, I'll close public comment. I'm going to make the motion to.
Can we make comments now?
We can, but I can, I'll make a motion and with comments, and then you can make comments. We can always make comments after the motion has been made. And Councilwoman Ternay has seconded it. I think this is very important. I know that this same intersection improvement project came before us, I think it's almost two years ago now. I did that before Gil said it. And at the time, I remember being a little frustrated at the kind of lack of, you know, to me, the data that I needed, because I drive that intersection. I'm sure all of us do quite often. And it's a problematic spot where you, you know, you can either turn left or go straight or go straight or go right, and it's always, always, you know, people are, you know, almost, you feel like they're driving into you. I think this is, we do so much, our staff does so much in-house, you know, especially Mr. Zandvliet. And if he's saying this would be helpful for us to actually understand the options and the speed and the different, you know, scenarios, then I'm, I'm all for it, because I do think that's a pretty problematic place, so that's why I made the motion. No, go ahead, I know you want to.
Okay.
But thank you for pushing the button.
Thank you. So, so the thing I just brought up today was the cost of, you know, of this particular tool or project here. It just seems excessive. In the past, we've had schematics, like I said before, for my five years on council so far. I've never seen one, never seen the need for it. This is not a particularly complex situation here. Yes, it's grant money, but still it's money. So that's really what I, and that's what we're being asked to vote on today, is the extra money for the engineering studies. So I just want to express that, you know, I don't support this. It's not the merits of the project, it's just this execution of this particular tool. I think, as you said, most of us have driven over this. We know what it looks like. We know with any sort of proposal, it's going to, you know, what it would do and not do. So I just think it's excessive cost.
All right. And before I turn to my colleague, I see a couple other people speaking. Yes, I drive it, but I'm not sure I could design the solutions. And if I, actually, I do want to turn to Eric, if you could come down. Because you, one of the reasons we haven't had schematic, or, you know, a simulation maybe before is, maybe I'm giving you too much credit, maybe it's Gil, too, sorry. But you are so good at coming up with in-house solutions and like what you did in my neighborhood with the crosswalk across Valley and Ardmore, et cetera. I mean, you can, can you explain why this is necessary or why you feel this is necessary?
Sure, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Holworth. Members of the city council, I'm Eric Zandvliet, the city traffic engineer. We are proposing to have a simulation of a couple of different alternatives. The reason is, is that there's several different things that are going on. The reason is, is that there's several different things that are going on at the intersection as far as the proposed solutions. One is a split-phase intersection where you have greens going in one direction and then greens going in the opposite direction during a different time. You have crosswalks, four crosswalks, you have new left turn pockets. We don't know how that's all going to interact. We want to make sure that we get the traffic to flow the best through that intersection. And so this is a, a small exercise to actually graphically see how all those little cars are going to go. It's going to help the City Council visualize it as well. This has been done in the past when the Skechers development was proposed in Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach, and whether or not there should have been traffic signals installed on Sepulveda Boulevard. And so they ran a simulation to find out whether or not it would help or not. In the end, they decided it wouldn't. It wouldn't help, the signals wouldn't help. This $20,000 is basically insurance to us to make sure that we get the right solution, because we're going to spend a half a million dollars on this, on this intersection.
That's good context.
So it's a little bit of money to ensure that we spend it right.
Okay. I appreciate, and I know that this is a little bit out of order because we closed staff questions, but, okay, thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Tarnay.
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my rationale for supporting this. I think, you know, we're relying on experts in the field. I think that our, our staff, they're doing what they've been trained to do. And so if they're asking for a tool that'll make it more efficient and make it better and easier for them, I do see that, that the funds are being, are being funded under a grant. And so to me, utilizing money wisely rather than, anecdotally, I can look at that intersection and say, oh, well, I think this and I think that. But my opinion isn't as important or as, as valid as someone who's been trained to do that. So I, you know, I trust the recommendations that are being made by staff, and that's why I love you supporting this motion. Thank you.
Count, Mayor Protem for one more meeting.
I appreciate Councilmember Franklin pulling this item and requesting clarification of what this tool is, particularly given its cost. But in skimming the item earlier and hearing the staff presentation, I think this is a necessary expense to get it right. And so I would be in favor of the motion for all the reasons stated by the mayor and Councilmember Tarnay. I also wanted to take a brief moment to echo the mayor in welcoming our interim public works director. We're very grateful to have you here. Thank you, sir.
Well, Ted, and I appreciate you saying, it's great that you pulled the item. We can, you know, we always should be looking closely and, and hearing about it. So that, that's all very good. With that, we will call for the question.
Okay. Motion passes three to two with Franklin and Sherillion voting no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so item number 14. This was Councilmember Sherillion, correct? The Lot Three Parking Structure Update.
Yes, I just. Page 905 of the packet talks about some of the processes that we've done so far for, for Lot Three as far as community input engagement. I guess I just want an update from the city manager as to what's happening. We're, it's almost coming up on a year since we demolished it and we've got it up and running, and I don't want to get complacent here with just having a parking lot. I want to know what the plan is, and I want to know, you know, if you can give us an update.
Yeah, great.
Absolutely, thank you for the question, Councilmember Sherillion. After the purchase of 400 MBB, staff shifted gears from a single property project to a double property project, given the proximity of the two parcels to each other. And so that's when we initiated Project Pulse and hosted the first community meeting. And staff is currently preparing to come back to council with some general concepts, along with some information from our consultant Cosmont, that is scheduled for next month. At that point, council will give us some better direction on whether or not there are things to eliminate from our analyses. And, and from there on, we will be hosting additional community meetings. And with each community meeting, we'll return to council for an update.
Is that, is that something that, you know, because there's a lot to go through, I'm sure, at that point? Is that something that we would have at a regular council meeting? Or would it be a, a special council meeting, so we're just focused on that? I don't want to run into things that we've done in the past, that we've had big things that have taken four hours of council.
At this point, it was scheduled for a regular council meeting, but if there's interest, we can hold the council for a special council meeting date.
Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Definitely want to keep the pedal, not pedal to the metal, but definitely eye on the prize that way. All right, so we need, any other questions from council members? Open it up to public. Okay, how about on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
And I, I guess I would just want to say that, you know, stay tuned, because I would assume that once we, whether it's in a workshop or in a council meeting, once we opine on some ideas, there may be more public, I hope there's more public outreach. Yeah, I mean, and, you know, interfacing with the businesses and et cetera.
Absolutely. We have, we'll, we will be hosting a series of public outreach sessions and community engagement, charrettes, et cetera. At this point, it's really to understand from the council if there are things we can eliminate from the work that will better able us to focus on certain types of projects, and it'll also help us direct our, any monies that are being attributed to consultants for studying those things.
Great. Appreciate that. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
I have one clarification matter, either for the city manager or the city attorney, that is, this item is before us as an emergency action. Can you define that? Because it, of course, requires a four-fifths vote. And for how much longer will that emergency continue?
City manager will address how much longer. Yeah, so initially, to take rapid action, we, you know, got a contract through the council giving us the authorization to use our emergency powers. There's still some things that need to be done, but we're getting very close to declaring the emergency over.
Anything else?
I think I jumped the gun.
We, we actually met on this slide just before this meeting today, and we believe we'll be bringing forward, we would be ending the emergency with the next council report.
Great, thank you.
Amazing. All right. And so we have a motion by Councilmember Tarnay, been seconded by Mayor Protem for one more meeting, lesser.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to public hearings. Item number 17. This is, we're going to conduct a public hearing in consideration of resolutions regarding the renewal of the Downtown Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2025-26, including authorization to collect assessments, ratification of the district advisory board, authorization to enter into an agreement with the Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association business, and authorization to disburse assessments collected through June 30th, 2025, ticket away Finance Director Brett Hauer.
Thank you for reading our very long titles.
Yes, it's hard with braces.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are pleased to present for your consideration the renewal of the Downtown Business Improvement District for fiscal year 25-26. This annual renewal is a process required by state law. The process for renewal began on June 17th with the approval of a resolution of intention to renew and levy the assessment. The next step is to hold the public hearing tonight to accept testimony either for and against the proposed assessments. Approval is based on whether there is a weighted majority protest by businesses paying 50% or more of the total assessment. So this year, assessments for the district again remain unchanged. The Downtown Business Improvement District is funded through an 80% surcharge on the annual business license tax, up to a maximum of $600 per business. All legal requirements for tonight's public hearing have been met, including mailing copies of the resolution of intention to all bid members, and a notice was published in the Beach Reporter. So to renew the bid, several steps need to be taken by the City Council tonight, including holding the public hearing to receive testimony. And assuming insufficient protests are received, we ask you adopt Resolution Number 2592, authorizing for the collection of assessments. The second item is to ratify the Business Improvement District Advisory Board members. The third item is to adopt Resolution 2593, authorizing the city manager to enter into the agreement with the Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association for services outlined in the attached activity plan and budget, which start on page 969 of your agenda packet. And the fourth item is to authorize the dispersment of bid funds that were collected during the fiscal year 24-25, which to date are totaling approximately $118,300. So Kelly Strowman, the Executive Director of the Downtown Business and Professional Association, is here in the audience, as well as our, the Downtown Bid Board President. So I'm sure they would be happy to answer any questions. And I am also here for your questions, but at this time, we recommend the public hearing is opened at, to proceed.
Okay, great. Are there questions for our Finance Rec before I conduct the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to, oh, thank you, I'm going to open up the public hearing. So yes, and comments, that's what that means, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Michael Zissler, President of the BID, Business Improvement District, which was set up many, many years ago to handle the parking problem in Manhattan Beach. Remember, we owned all the parking lots, we burdened all the businesses, we paid for them, we collected the money, and then when Metlocks was built, we turned it over to the city, and they have done a great job steering it ever since. But I just want to say that we are glad and we hope that you approve the transfer of our funds to the DBPA, because they know what our requirements are. We have meetings, you know, twice a year that we want to focus on access to the beach, parking by the beach. That's why maybe certain things that are happening right now that take up parking are really hot buttons for us, because we're always worried about how we're going to park people. But the DBP, DBPBA does a great job, and I hope you approve it tonight. Fair enough? Any questions of us?
Easy.
And remember, this is a, a tax that's put on all downtown brick and mortar businesses, and I think they pay somewhere around $600 a year, and that all goes to the DBPA for marketing, all the things to make us run our city as great as it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Other comments regarding this item? How about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
All right, I am going to close the public hearing. So I need, well, if there's comments or questions or comments, make them, but I would also entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Numbers 25-0092 through 0093. We'll do that, and then we'll ratify the board separately. Okay. Call for the question. It was moved by Councilmember Franklin and seconded by Councilmember Tarnay.
Motion passes five zero.
I need a motion to ratify the board as presented, moved by Councilmember Tarnay, seconded by Councilmember Franklin. And a motion to, oh, sorry.
Motion passes five zero.
I'm just moving. A motion to authorize a dispersment of assessments collected through June 30th, 2025. The team of Councilmember Tarnay has moved it and seconded by Councilmember Franklin.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, and I just want to comment, you know, they're such a, they're a great collaborator and partner in the city. You know, they will always advocate for their businesses and, as they should, but I also find them to be such creative problem solvers and really always look forward to working with them. So thank you. Item 18, another public hearing. Conduct public hearing and consideration of a resolution regarding the annual storm drain service fee for fiscal year 25-26. Director Brett Hauer.
Thank you. Good evening again. Tonight's public hearing is for consideration of Resolution Number 250094 for the collection of storm drain assessment fees and approving a CPI increase of 3.4%. This annual process is required for the city to levy storm drain assessments on property tax bills. This process requires a public hearing to be conducted, and city council approval is needed before the assessments can be submitted to LA County. The fee is levied on property tax bills to finance our ongoing operations and maintenance of the city's storm drain facility and services. A CPI adjustment is allowable with city council approval after the passage of the Proposition 218 storm drain ballot measure that was concluded in January of 2024. So if you recall, that CPI increases, increase was included this time around, since for many years, we had no CPI increase and our assessments just did not keep up, keep up with the, our increasing costs. So tonight, the proposed CPI increase of 3.4% is based on the All Urban Consumers Index for LA, Long Beach, and Anaheim region, and the date range is from December 20, 2023 to December 24. So the assessments for fiscal year 25-26 are estimated to generate approximately $2.2 million. At this time, we recommend that you open the public hearing for the proposed assessments, and assuming there is no majority protest, please adopt Resolution Number 250094, approving the CPI increase and ordering that the storm drain fees be collected. After the resolution is adopted, staff will submit the assessments to LA County for inclusion on property tax bills. And I'd also like to note that Tamara Bryant and Francisco Rojas from Harris and Associates are available on Zoom should you have any technical questions about the assessments.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for staff? All right, I will open up the public hearing. Does anyone here in chambers have any comments on item number 18? Saying none, are there any public comments on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, so we can thank our consultants for attending. There's been a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-0094, and that's been made by Councilmember Sherillion and seconded by Councilmember Tarnay, and I see a question or comment?
Just that I think it's on the wrong screen.
Oh, yeah, we're on 18. Great. So we still, we still have a motion by Councilmember Sherillion, and it's still been seconded by Councilmember Tarnay for item 18, Resolution 25-0094.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. Okay, our third and final public hearing of the evening. Public hearing in consideration of an ordinance renewing the city's military equipment policy. And we have Lieutenant Benjamin here. And this is, can you fill us in on this public hearing?
All right, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Kelly Benjamin. I'm currently the lieutenant overseeing our traffic and special events section. Tonight, I am here to present the Manhattan Beach Police Department's 2024 Annual Military Equipment Use Report as required by California Government Code Section 7072. This law is about transparency, and it ensures that our community is informed about the specialized equipment that is being used by our police department. By law, and under our own city ordinance and our military equipment policy, this report must include how each type of equipment was used, any complaints received, which this year we had none, the results of internal audits, the annual costs, and updated list of our current inventory and any requests for equipment we may seek in the coming year. You'll find all of this information in tonight's presentation and is available on our city website. So before we begin, I want to clarify what military equipment actually means. The term military equipment is defined by state law, not by the Manhattan Beach Police Department. In practice, it refers to the tools that our officers don't carry every day. These are used in specific situations, for example, our drones, which are commercially available and can be purchased by anyone, but they still fall under this definition. Also, any request for new equipment tonight doesn't mean that we're actually purchasing that equipment right away. If council approves these requests, we still have to go through our regular budgeting and purchasing process. So think of this as the first step. Basically, this is the first transparency step. Now, here's a quick summary of how the Manhattan Beach Police Department used military equipment in 2024. Last year, we purchased two drones. They were previously approved by council. We deployed those drones 16 times for incidents and special events, and 11 times for training purposes. Our Bearcat, which is the regional Bearcat that we use with our other South Bay cities, was used once by us for a community event, once for a search warrant, and once for training. Our mobile command post, which is the Manhattan Beach Police Department of Fire Our mobile command post, which is the Manhattan Beach Police Department Fire Department RV, was deployed five times for community events, twice for traffic collisions, and once for a DUI checkpoint. Our SWAT mobile command vehicle was used 10 times for training and twice for search warrants. Our CNT van was not used this year because it was being upgraded, and the upgrade cost was just over $38,000. Breaching tools, tear gas, and explosive projectiles were not, were not used by the Manhattan Beach Police Department last year. We did use two flashbang devices during one SWAT warrant. Rifles were used only for training, like qualifications and team drills, and kinetic energy launchers were used once for SWAT training, including the use of H sponge rounds. As for audits and community input, no complaints were received in 2024. Like I mentioned previously, our inventory was reviewed by each responsible bureau, and no significant issues were found. As for costs, the total identified cost of equipment-related expenses in 2024 was $46,718.75, and that includes expenses for upgrades, like I previously mentioned, maintenance for these vehicles and these tools, training of our officers, and ammunition replacement. All these costs were covered within our existing police department's budget. Much of the training involving military equip, equipment is included in other departmental training that is not reported as part of this presentation. And so, for example, our SWAT team does movement training, and the focus of that movement training is movement. The focus is not firing the rifle or the rifle specifically, so we do not charge that as a military equipment training. That is a SWAT movement training. And that's a little bit different than something like drone training. Drone training is specific to the military piece of equipment, drones, and so that is included in this presentation that I am doing. Regarding our inventory, the full 2024 equipment log is attached to this presentation, is kept current, and we update it throughout the year. And now, looking ahead to 2025, we're requesting council approval to pursue a few purchases. So we request to purchase additional drones as our drone and traffic programs continue to implement this emerging technology. We request to purchase replacement pepperball systems for our mobile field force because our old systems were decommissioned. We request to purchase replacement patrol rifles that are nearing end of life, and we request to purchase additional sniper rifles as we've added new members to that team, and we prefer for each member to have their own assigned rifle. Lastly, we're requesting approval to bring forward urgent equipment, equipment requests via staff report to council if a need comes up before our next public meeting, which will likely be held in March of 2026. Again, approval tonight just allows us to move forward with the process. Any purchases would still follow our city procedures. So, in closing, staff recommends holding this public meeting, which we are doing now, that council receive and file the 2024 Military Equipment Report, that we introduce Ordinance 25-0007 to renew Ordinance 22-0006, and that council approve the equipment request for 2025 is outlined. So thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I looked at my colleagues, are there any questions, Lieutenant Benjamin? Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to public comments. So are there any comments in chamber regarding this topic? Okay, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, I want to ask our city attorney something before I entertain the motion. Now, do we need to do all the?
You read my mind. You can just do one motion.
I thought we could.
Introduce the ordinance.
Okay, so it has been moved by Councilmember Sherrillian, and that motion would be?
To conduct the public hearing and consideration of ordinance renewing the city's military equipment policy.
And introducing the ordinance.
And introducing the ordinance.
Okay, and that has been?
Anything else?
If there's a second, I can read the title.
There has been a second by Councilmember Tarnay, so please read the title.
Ordinance Number 250007, ordinance of the City of Manhattan Beach, renewing a previously approved military equipment use policy pursuant to Assembly Bill 481, Government Code Section 7070, EdSec.
Call for the question. Okay.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask my colleagues if we can do a five to seven minute break, a quick break, so we'll be back here in five to seven minutes. Okay, thank you. We are in recess.
Okay, hold on. Wait till Joe comes down, we can ask if we can go live or let you. Oh, I'm so glad. Go ahead.
Are you all right?
I'm very glad that our Parks and Rec Director Mark Lehman is standing before us. So I can do my schick with him that I love to do, which is on item number six on the consent calendar, don't worry, we're not going back in time, was a declaration of a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month.
Ah.
And you know, parks make life better.
They absolutely do, thank you, Mayor.
You know, and tonight it was really great. We saw these kids who, a lot of them have probably come up to the recreation department with volleyball, et cetera. And I should have called it out earlier in the evening, and I'm so sorry, but happy Parks and Recreation Month, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, item number 20. Take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. So the item before you this evening is a request from the North Manhattan Beach Business Improvement District for their annual Holiday Stroll event, which is scheduled for Sunday, December 7th, 2025. And a quick background on the event, the Holiday Stroll features over 75 local businesses. There is a holiday window display, food, shopping, kids' zone, local artists gift fair, and various entertainment. Looking at a map of the proposed event, the bid has requested a road closure of Highland Avenue, and the request before you is twofold. First, the bid is asking to close Highland Avenue between Rosecrans and 33rd Street for the duration of the event, and historically Highland Avenue has not been closed, although a smaller closure on 35th Street has been permitted for the kids' zone. A second, with the road closure comes increased costs, so the city has previously approved a full fee waiver for city services for up to $9,919. The proposed road closure would add approximately $20,000 in additional city service costs and just over $10,000 in third-party costs, which would include barricades and traffic control services. This brings the total additional expense to roughly $30,000. Because this amount is unbudgeted, staff is requesting City Council give direction of both the closure and associated funding. So this request was reviewed by the Special Events Committee in June, which did not oppose the closure, on the condition that event takes place on a Sunday, which it now will. The Parks and Recreation Commission also reviewed the request in June and voted to approve the road closure. For reference, the Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association hosts a holiday open house in conjunction with the annual pier lighting. Because it is associated with the pier lighting, the DBPA is not billed for city services or third-party costs, for reference. Also like to note that the city currently provides fee waivers for third-party costs for other signature community events, including holiday fireworks, Hometown Fair, and the MB 10K. So staff is seeking direction on, A, the road closure, and two, funding appropriation. So there are four options before you. The first option is to approve the closure and waive only additional city services, requiring the bid to reimburse the city for third-party costs. Number two, approve the closure and provide a full fee waiver, including city services and third-party costs. Number three, approve the closure without any additional fee waiver. Or number four, deny the road closure and any increase in the fee waiver. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I am available, as well as Jill Lampkin, the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Sherillian.
Hey, Mark, thanks for the report. Have you gotten any feedback from the community on the road closure? Have we done any kind of outreach to the community, like what those impacts would be and how they feel about them?
Other than working with, again, the bid and also the Special Events Committee, not specifically outreach to the community.
Okay, great, thank you. And I am a liaison to the bid as part of the City Council, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lesser?
I have questions. Mark, first, the total number of hours that Highland would be closed, I'm a little bit unsure based on reading the staff report. When would the closure be proposed to begin with setup? When would it be proposed to end with takedown and complete?
If it's 3 to 9, is that correct? 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
I have questions for our traffic engineer, if I could.
And that includes, I'm sorry, that includes both setup and takedown? The 3:00 PM?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there an estimate of how many vehicles we're talking about? I recognize, without more data and modeling, it'd be difficult to estimate, but even on a Sunday, there's a fair amount of traffic that travels on Highland, correct?
A Sunday is a very light day. It's actually the lightest day of the week for Highland Avenue, so that's why we're not opposing a Sunday. We would oppose a Thursday because there's, you know, 25,000 cars a day on Highland Avenue on a weekday. On this Sunday, during this time period, we're probably talking about 5,000 cars. It's a diversion that we would take. The southbound traffic, or both directions of traffic would go down Manhattan Avenue between Rosecrans Avenue and 33rd Street.
So I want to talk to you about Manhattan Avenue, or better understand how Manhattan Avenue is going to be able to handle at least 5,000 cars that are also going to be dispersed throughout the neighborhood. What is your assessment of Manhattan Avenue, because it is, you know, somewhat narrow?
It's one lane in each direction, and there will be limited access to Manhattan Avenue from the side streets, and so there won't be any stops in between those two streets. Basically, you'll have continuous flow and restricted turn restrictions at certain points, so you won't be adding to the traffic.
To pick up on-
It does require, you know, traffic management.
To pick up on a question by Councilmember Sherillian, to what extent do those homeowners know that their street is about to become, if council moves forward with this, a bit crowded on that Sunday?
Right, at this point, I don't believe that they do know about the potential impacts of a detour. I know that the bid has gotten support from the business owners, but not necessarily from the surrounding neighborhood.
Finally, I'm not sure if this would be a question for you or for Director Lehman, whether an alternative was explored to perhaps close additional perpendicular streets to Highland as well. There's one street, I think it's 35th, that would be closed again for the kids' zone, was an alternative explored of just closing some, an additional side street or two, so there could be more community events, even though those streets are at a pretty severe risk angle, so they might not lend themselves to programming.
Sure, when we've discussed this with the BID in prior years, we were looking for alternatives so that we did not have, wouldn't have to close Highland Avenue. That included, as you mentioned, more use of the side streets, perhaps portions of the parking areas along Highland Avenue. You'd have to protect those to make sure that, you know, you don't have cars running through the middle of it, of course. And you're right, there are some limited ability to use some of those sloped streets. That was an off, that we've offered that as an alternative as well. I believe that we also found that there may be a safer condition if you were to completely close off Highland Avenue, so that pedestrians aren't walking into the street, or you have the other friction or conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles in that zone for that time. It's much cleaner for the police department and fire department to handle a closed zone than it is to address that mixed traffic.
Okay, thank you.
That's interesting, thank you. Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, thank you. So how many holiday strolls have there been?
In that, in the North End?
In the North End, yeah, in this location. Is it about five? I'm trying to-
More than that.
Don't know the answer to that. I can find out for you.
It's got to be at least 10 or 15.
Yeah, it's been going on since last-
I was their liaison as a former, as the former director, and it's happened at least for six years, so I want to say 10, 15 at least.
Okay.
At least 10 for the legacy event status, so.
Yeah.
Is there a sense that by doing this closure, that it will increase, you know, participation? I mean, I've gone to at least the last five, and it is a fun event, and everybody says, well, we need to get the street, you know, if we could get into the street, or at least where the cars were parking, so. But is there a sense from the business owners and the promoters of this event that it's going to grow quite a bit because the street will be closed off?
I think that is the hope and the intent, to gather more community support, again, with that street closure, welcoming people and having the ability to, you know, safely walk through the streets.
Okay. And there are some stalls that are, are they rented to vendors?
Yes, and I know the details, I know Jill can share the details of how that is working out, again, with this new footprint and new event. I know that they're working through some of those details.
All right, and would, by closing this off, would you be able to put more of those in there? And was that-
That would be my assumption, yes, yes.
Yeah, but was that figured into the economics that we're seeing here? You know, the amount of money, if you're charging more for the stalls, is that going to defer some of the additional expenses for closing off the street?
I think that would be a question for-
Do you want to call, I mean, I don't know if they've just, who can answer? I don't think Mark can answer that question.
Right, okay. I'm just asking the question as far as, you know, what other revenue, sources of revenue there would be by, because it will be a great enhancement, you know, for the evening, and that could be attractive to additional vendors.
We can direct that question to North End Bid when we open the public hearing.
Okay, all right. That's all for now.
Okay. Other questions right now? Okay, we're going to open up to public comment, thank you, Director Lehman. Jill Lampkin, just been a minute. Congratulations to your son.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Jill Lampkin, Chamber of Commerce. I think probably the easiest thing is to start sort of from the beginning on this one. And in the spirit of collaboration, you know, that we did with the DBPA, I sort of watched them go through this, the North End go through this process for the last couple of years and try to get to this, to this point, and worked with Eric and PD and, you know, like, how can we help them get to yes instead of it being a no? And there were a lot of accommodations. So the first one was, it can't be on a weeknight, can't be on a weeknight because there's just too much traffic going through there. So that was the impetus to change it to a Sunday, certainly not their first choice because it's not, you know, the best night for, you know, getting people to go out and do things, but it was a big concession, and I was like, if it can get you to yes, I think this is worth it. And then there have been a lot of concerns, actually, safety concerns, with the situation of the traffic going through there with people, so many people on the sidewalks. And so that was actually a big part of it, was to try to find a solution where people feel like, I mean, like even when I went to the Parks and Rec Commission, that was one of the things that they said, was they were really worried last year about the, like, anywhere that there was entertainment, it was spilling over into the streets, and they felt like that was creating a safety hazard. And so I actually think this is a much safer option. The other piece to this is, and boy, am I like setting myself up here, but they don't have any other revenue generating opportunities right now, and they're, I'm trying to help them figure out, I mean, their bid is much smaller, they only get about $30,000 a year. And so one of their ideas was to open this up to paying vendors and see what we can do in terms of creating some foot traffic, because unlike downtown Manhattan Beach, they don't have a lot of retailers. And so they don't mind the idea of bringing in, you know, something that might be competitive with downtown, is not competitive in the North End. And so they're evaluating a lot of vendors that are, have been at the Hometown Fair, that have been down in Riviera Village, and that were at, oh gosh, what's Fiesta Hermosa. So that, if this were to go through, they're very excited to look into that as a revenue generating idea. I hope we can get, you know, enough people there to make it worthwhile for the vendors, but that's dropping on me, so I'm like, okay, I got to work on that now. Does that answer all the questions? The other thing that I wanted to mention is, and I know that there are other events that do have all of the fees waived, this little area doesn't get so many activities and attention and all those kinds of things. It is an additional $10,000 to cover just, you know, those non-city expenses, but it would be really helpful for them, particularly because we're kind of doing an experiment on this one to see if it works. And if it works, I think going forward, I don't think anyone would have any qualms about that, but just kind of this first time around, we're going to be spending a lot of money on marketing and things like that to try to generate. The other question that you had, Mayor Protim Lesser, that you mentioned about traffic going down Manhattan Avenue, one of the things that they have expressed over and over to me is that this is a hyper-localized event. The people that come here are not driving in from other places, and it's parking, they're walking from their homes. And so the impact, I think, would have a little bit more empathy for residents that are closer by to this, just because that's generally who's coming to this event.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good.
Great, any other comments in chambers? Okay, how about on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Open it back up to my colleagues, Councilwoman Tarnay.
I just have a question. I do have some concerns about traffic, and so I'm trying to listen and see how we're going to abate that, because I live off of, you know, on the North End, and I really enjoy the stroll, but I'm really concerned with how we're going to accommodate and whether, you know, we can truly accommodate the diversion of traffic, maybe, you know, even having, encouraging people to take Rosecrans and Valley, and that's going to boil down to, I think, just getting that information out there. So are those efforts going to be made as well, to include not just diverting traffic down Manhattan Ave, but getting the whole town to understand that we're going to try this and divert traffic in a bigger way?
Sure, thank you very much. Let me help you, try to help answer that question. Over the course of the iterations, we have looked at how we would best divert traffic around the Holiday Stroll. We do have to protect the neighborhoods surrounding this area, particularly Dune Section, so that people don't divert down through the Dune Section-
Yes.
-and to try to get around Rosecrans Avenue. Another similar event that we do, where we do close down Highland Avenue, is the MB 10K. And so we already have experience in how to divert traffic around this area on a Sunday.
Great, can I follow up with that?
Of course.
And then as far as in dealing with parking as well, because on this side of town, we don't have as many parking structures.
We didn't turn up the pads.
What's?
Nothing.
Oh. Don't bring up the parking pads right now. But, you know, are we giving any thought to how we're going to provide more parking? I know that it's, ideally, it's going to be a localized event, and in my experience, it has been, but if this is something that we're going to try to bring more people in to really support the businesses-
Right.
-are we considering how we're going to deal with?
Absolutely. And so as part of the marketing, which I hope the BID will be pushing, is that we will have the entire El Portal parking lot available on a Sunday evening, which doesn't get a lot of use in the wintertime. And so we'll have a lot of parking available if we could just get them to park and go down that way.
Okay, thank you.
And what, that's not a question for you, sorry, thank you. And this does not, the holiday fireworks are the weekend after, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just like, my head just exploded thinking about, surely we thought of that, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to just address some of the communication questions that are kind of coming up, specifically about the notices. I think Mayor Protim brought that up, and possibly Councilmember Sherillian. And that was discussed at our Special Events Committee meeting with the bid, and we had discussed the need for public outreach from the bid, specifically notices going, and mailers going out to the residents who might be impacted by potential road closures. So we had that conversation, and then to your question, Councilmember Tarnay, we, if there's any sort of impact on the neighborhood, there's plenty of options for us to mitigate traffic impacts through communications. So whether it's a South Bay, alert South Bay notification that goes out, informing residents on how to best navigate those traffic impacts, we could certainly do that, social media outreach, as well as email notifications, so we can definitely get the word out if that's the course that the council would like to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there comments? Councilmember Sherillian.
Thank you, and I do as well support this. This has been long coming for the North End. You know, it's, you know, we tried over the years to have these side areas in the streets with the slope, and Eric, where's Eric? He did a great job trying to navigate through that. I understand this is going to be impactful, but it is, you know, a community-based event. You know, I'm sure we're going to get some blowback from residents that didn't hear, no matter how much communication we do, but, I mean, this is for a very short period of time, and I think it's strategic, as Ali was saying, we just get the communication out. We do a real good job with communication, we let the public know this is maybe, you know, a pilot program, or we're just trying it for the first time, but, you know, this is going to be easier than I'm sure what the 28th Street infiltration project's going to bring to that area for a longer period of time, which I could keep hearing about. So, thank you.
Sure. Councilwoman Tarnay.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Sherillian said, is I think, you know, I do have some serious reservations about the impact on traffic and the neighbors, but I also know that we, on the North Side, are always so envious of the downtown Holiday Stroll, and this is, I would love for this opportunity to grow, and so if we can do this in a pilot program and be really mindful about our approaches to make sure that this is a successful event, I would appreciate those efforts, and I know that the businesses, it's really tough for the businesses on the North End of town because we don't have parking. So this is hopefully an opportunity to support those businesses so that more people will recognize that it's just not downtown that has businesses that need our support, but also the North Side of town. So when I first got this, read the proposal for the closure and the expansion of the program, I have to say, I was really nervous about it, but in listening to the presentation and that you're being mindful and thoughtful about how we're going to proceed with this, I'd love to be able to support it and help it grow and support our businesses, but also make it an event that local residents, all residents can attend without impacting too significantly the people who live in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mayor Protim, for one more reason, Lesser. Never gets old.
Thank you. Either for Mark or our city manager, I wanted to confirm again the amount of money- of money that's being requested that is outside of our recently adopted budget that would be involved in providing staff support for this event.
Can we go back to the slide, Martha, where it had the options for the council? I think this will help the council. Do you want to walk them through?
Okay. The first, the first line that says approve, the, the total for the first and second categories are both $30,000. The difference is that in the, in the first category, there are $10,000 worth of third-party costs that could either be paid by the bid or the city. So that's the difference between the two categories is the $30,000 is inclusive of the $10,000 third-party costs is $30,243. But if the council chooses not to pay for those 30, not to pay for the third-party cost, that brings it down to $20,027.
This is an extremely difficult matter for me. I have been the council delegate to the North End Business Improvement District. I used to live three blocks from where the holiday stroll is conducted. But I'm a no. I'm a no because of, first, Highland is an artery. Even with reduced traffic flow on a Sunday afternoon and evening, it still is a major artery in and out of the city. It was very different circumstances. Also, it was semi-permanent. But I was part of the council that advocated for opening a lane on Vista Del Mar. We were the council that were looking for access for our community. This is a very different circumstance. This is temporary. It's a special event. But in keeping with what that advocacy was all about, I take, I'm extremely cautious to close Highland beyond just our 10K race. The parking issue, to the extent we have a larger event, we're gonna have to park it. While the El Porto lot is certainly an option, there will be other cars parking in the neighborhoods and impacting those neighbors. Though the neighbors will also be impacted by cars circumventing the closure. And even though, again, it's not a rush hour on a weekday, it still will have adverse impacts on those neighbors who were unlikely to be thrilled. Finally, the money. We just approved a budget. The amount of money involved beyond our budget is problematic for me. So for those reasons, I can't support this.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, thank you. One thing I'm gonna go back to, maybe ask kind of a question that I don't see here are sponsors to help mitigate and offset some of those costs. Not that I always wanna go to Chevron, but they're a neighbor right there. There's that power generating company that's a neighbor. There's longstanding restaurants that might be able to contribute. And I'm just wondering if with a little bit of effort, we can go, you know, there can be some of the costs significantly, you know, recovered to wear the burden to the city. And I'm very sensitive to, you know, Mayor, almost Mayor, almost Mayor, what is it you call?
Mayor Pro Tem for one more meeting.
Mayor Pro Tem for one more, yeah, for one more week. Comments about the budget. I mean, that was a laborious, you know, laborious. That's what we do. That's what we're here for, is to
That's true.
Work on the, you know, and, and provide and, you know, bring forth a, a balanced budget. And this is a not insignificant amount of money. So I guess if it's, if we may, can we ask, have, have any sponsors been approached?
I believe that would be a question for Jill.
Okay.
Come up.
And is it feasible to look for sponsors?
The first thing about the timing is, we couldn't do anything with this until the association was formed. And the association was formed after the budget. And so that's why the timing is, is bad. We did the best that we could getting it in, you know, right after that. Sponsorship, we, we're, we're working on getting it approved first. So it's, it's a great idea. No, it's not something that we had talked about to this point. Really, I mean, we do want it to be a revenue generating event. And so if we can get sponsors that would, you know, help pay for some of the entertainment and things like that, that would be good. And yes, if we need to do that for some of the other expenses, we can, we can see if anybody out there is willing to do that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
So I think, well, all of us that have been on council for a while have been the representatives for the North End. And as I mentioned before, I have attended this event. And it is a lot of fun. I think it gets a lot of people in those neighborhoods out and enjoying themselves, you know, for the holiday spirit. Certainly the stores and restaurants and everybody enjoy it. I would like to maybe entertain, I, I don't know quite how we would do this, but to approve it, but subject to a reduction in the city's obligation based upon any sponsors that come forward and see, you know, how much they can raise that way. And then we would make up the difference.
Okay. Councilmember Shuriliyan, you have another comment before I?
Yeah, I do. And I think I could help with that scenario.
Great, great.
Jill, if you don't mind, come down.
My steps in today.
I guess, I guess two things. Seems to be, it's a concern of mine to obviously be in fiscal impact. The North Bid has funds in the parking fund. They've got maybe $350,000. I mean, we're talking about already option number one, you guys kicking in $10,000. I mean, because it's important to all of us with the fiscal impact, is that something that you guys can carry this year and then just kind of show us like, and, you know, this worked and we got the communication out. And then maybe in the future years, we can look at and revisit it. That seems to be a stickler. And then the other option is for the marketing. I think it's real important because it's community-driven. And you're right, there's not a lot of retailers out there and it's all restaurants. You know, maybe get those flyers out there, a third of a page, when they get their food, whether it's to-go or in-house eating, you start that really early and you let those residents know all again and again. It's like, oh, I got this thing again, the street's gonna be closed. So if there's some stuff like that you can do outside the box of just sending postcards or whatnot, not you per se, but the city can do it. I'm not asking you to do it. But that's, those are my two questions.
And I, I hear what you're saying about the reserve funds. I also got the same question from you about when we were doing the association and we were working on the budget. You're like, well, if you spend this, how are you gonna recoup that money? Because you don't have any other revenue generating items.
Correct.
So it's kind of a, you know, it's, I mean, they're now paying for the chamber to help manage their process because they don't have any employees. And so that, that's an expense that they're undertaking. I, I totally understand. You, you know, I mean, like, we're all on the same page on this. I mean, I know that there is money there. I also think there's a hesitation to say, okay, if we would be willing, like, that was 10% of our forever budget, you know, of what we have. And that, it's a big risk, you know. And so if we're looking for revenue generating, we're already starting off in a, in a $30,000 hole. So, you know, I, I get it. I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from. The timing stinks because it was right after the budget. I, I get that. But I was just hopeful that as, you know, a legacy event, that at least some of the expenses would be covered because they always have been.
I mean, what do you think would be reasonable per se? If, would you, this is 30%, would it, would it be 50%? Would it be, what can you cover the first year to help us kind of move this along, I guess?
Well, I think, I think if, like, from a rationale of looking at what was proposed, I think the first option seems, seems fair, which is we would cover the third-party costs, which is what normally would, would happen.
Right.
That would be for a legacy event. That would be, not all legacy events, but some legacy events do pay that, the third-party costs.
Okay.
I also just, I mean, I know it's not the same because it's, it's, the pier lighting is, is also involved in Holiday Open House. But there are, sure are a lot of activities that happen downtown with street closures. And they don't have to pay any of those third-party costs. So just looking for a little.
It's apples to oranges. Let's, all right, any more questions for Jill?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry. So just along those lines, and, and I appreciate, you know, my colleagues bringing up that, because we have gone through the budget process and things that come out after, you know, we have to be able to justify. So I appreciate that point being made. And I also know that this has been a very, it's a year where you're all working really hard at just segment your duties and, and really bolster up all of our business associations, business districts. And so I appreciate the effort that's making. And so I feel like I can see you are all scrambling to make things work. And if you had more time, I can see that you'd be able to approach vendors or, or sponsor, corporate sponsors or even local sponsors. So with that in mind, is it helpful if we, if we could persuade some of my colleagues to approve of an up to $20,000 amount? And then in the meantime, you would all go out and look for sponsors. And so hopefully that would be a lot.
Listen, I don't think we need to ask car from the deus. If you think you can, I mean, they've given us options. We can do 20, we can do 30, we can do 10. How they get that $10,000 is up to them. You know, I mean, it's not our.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the, the other 20,000.
Oh, the other 20, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the other 20,000. So, you know, my, my proposal would be, and just because form-wise, I don't know how to, you know, to effectuate this, but.
Let me, let me throw out a few things here because you can, just sit down and kiss me. I mean, I just, there's, there's a few things going on here that I feel like I'm, I'm either torn or agnostic or both, if that might, wrap your head around that one. I am more concerned that when we said, how have the residents, have the residents been reached out to? I forget who brought up first. It's like, oh, yeah, we're gonna do marketing and we're gonna do that. That's not the same as reaching out to them ahead of time to say, what do you think about this? Because I can say, I can see people going, yeah, this is a fun event, but not if I can't get through my neighborhood. And so it's, it's, it's a twofold communication that I'd like to see happen. We're really, we're sort of used to legacy events and the events downtown. And I'd like to see this get started. But I, I don't, I, for the record, I want to say, when I say reach out to residents, it's not to inform them of this fun event. It's to say, hey, this is gonna impact you. You know, let's hear your thoughts on it. And to Councilmember Shuriliyan's point, you know, people often don't pay attention till, you know, the day before or whatever. And that's gonna happen. But at least we've made a good faith effort as a city to reach out and say, we're thinking of expanding this event in this regard. So I, so that's my number one point. And maybe there's a solution for it or not this year. But want to make that point that I think that that could have happened. And I, I'm glad you, you know, I said, are you gonna make another comment? I'm glad you did because I was gonna bring up that money because I know about that reserve. We may, I mean, a downtown business association may not pay for, there may be fees waived, but they pay thousands, maybe tens of thousands for entertainment, for all the stuff that goes on there. You know, I mean, Jill, you probably know the answer to that, but I'm not gonna ask. I mean.
But that's in the budget for this event, too. I mean, so that's.
You guys are gonna be paying, okay, yeah. So that's, that's good. But, and so I, I guess I'd, I'd be willing to, I hate this term. I use it all the time, split the baby. But, you know, anyway, I, I'm not, I, I do want to, I do, let's see. I didn't expect to think about this that much. At first, I'm like, oh, yeah, sure, let's just do this. But upon hearing a few different things, I do think it's a big deal to reroute all the traffic, like down to Manhattan Avenue and back, you know, around. On the other hand, I understand what the traffic engineer is saying, that this is actually a much safer approach. And it's a Sunday in December. Okay. I'm a little unclear on the concept, though, because when we talked, I think it was Councilmember Franklin brought up the vendors, the booths. That's not what downtown holiday open stroll is, right? That's just people going into the businesses to buy stuff and meet their friends and everything else. If, if this is a Fiesta Hermosa kind of thing, I like those vendors and I like the Hometown Fair vendors and I, Riviera, great. That's a really different kind of event. And so that will attract more than just the locals. That's, it has to. I mean, what would the goal, let me, Jill, let me ask you this. What would the, let me ask you this. What, what is, is there, is there a goal? Is there a revenue generation goal?
No. And I, I know that's, all of this sounds crazy. I know.
No, 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 it's not yours.
I mean, I'm three weeks.
No, it's a complete sentence. No is a complete sentence. Because, you know, I, I heard that. I mean, that's actually what kind of got me going down this path of, oh, what are we actually talking about here? You know, are we talking about the businesses down there having a hot chocolate and some musicians and the kid, kid area over here? Or are we talking about a bunch of booths set up in the middle of the street selling things? And if that's the case, we need to discuss that as a council about what the density of that's gonna be and how many of those we're gonna have. So I think this needs, personally, I think this needs to come back. And with a, like, I'm prepared to allocate the money. I'm prepared to, to support. I, but I'm, I would like, I'd like to understand what that looks like. You know, is it like a couple people per block? Or is it as many as we can get? Or is it two by two by two by two by two by two?
So I talked to the fire inspector already. And we, what he had suggested was four 10 by 10s and then a space and four 10 by 10s. And I honestly have no idea how many vendors we can even get in December at this point. I mean, like this, like I'm.
Yeah, but, but you hear, and, and I know you, you can get as many as you want. I'm just kidding.
Oh, I love your faith in me.
I, yeah. But I, so, but I want our colleagues to understand that. This is a very different thing than the holiday stroll. This is holiday Fiesta, North End.
Well, some of the, I mean, some of those would be like, I mean, some of it would be entertainment, too. I mean, we talked about, like, potentially having like the little train that used to be in the farmer's market so that it would get people to go farther. I mean, it's trying to draw people into, you know, into the farther ends of the, of the districts, too. Because the way that it's always been, it's always been just super-centralized in one area.
Okay. Go ahead, because I'm gonna talk to them. Did you have something to say? No, sorry. Thanks, Jill. Thanks for letting me be casual like that with you. So I want to turn to my colleagues. And, and at the end of the day, I'm, it's not that I'm opposed to shopping at all like that. But I want us to realize what we're approving before we just go, oh, okay. Because that's very different than the current stroll. So does anybody, I see Councilmember Tarnay.
So as I'm sitting up here, you know, one of you speak, and I'm like, yeah, let's do it. This sounds great. And then you speak, and then I'm like, oh, yeah. I, I'm gonna get angry calls from my neighbors who already hate the parking situation in, in our side of town. And then I also know all my friends who own businesses and we rarely get the foot traffic that downtown. I would love, and it's been a slow, knowing the north, the north side of the business areas, it's been a slow bleed. It's been awful. When I see how many businesses have failed on, on our side of town, it's, it's, it's awful. And so, you know, I appreciate us even thinking out of the box and thinking, because it has been so difficult. I've heard from all the people who've come and gone in the North Side of town, they can't sustain the business because we don't have the foot traffic. And so on the one hand, we do need something. And so while I'm really, really, you know, approaching this with great trepidation because I can see, you know, it's gonna be my head because it's gonna be all my neighbors who live on my side of town if they hate the event. But I also think if we don't do it, we'll never know. And so I, you know, I, well, I appreciate asking, polling neighbors, polling friends, I do think we're going to get, because people can't visualize, anytime that you say we're gonna close down Highland, everyone's in, up in arms. So until we can execute something and visualize what that could look like and do it as a one-year pilot program and say, okay, say, okay, let us think, let, let us know what you think. So I know it's inconvenient. I know that it's going to be challenging. But we want to support our north side of, all of our businesses on the north end, and encourage people to think outside of just downtown. Because we do have businesses, a lot of businesses on, on the north end that do need support. So.
Okay, so I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying. And I do think, you're right. If we were to poll neighbors in the area today, they'd say, no, no, that'd be awful. So that, that's, that's a terrific, fair point. So I'll concede on that, and I'm fine with the cost. Now, what I'm really going to focus on is controlling the size or the number of kind of vendor, like, I, I would like, I'm prepared to support with money. I'm prepared to support with shutting down the streets, so we can get started on that. I'd like the chamber, or I think you're the voice piece, to come back to us to say, you know, we, we propose having X amount. Or maybe I turn to my colleagues. I, I don't know what the right number to say is, because I can't visualize how many blocks it is, and I can't visualize exactly what we're thinking. But I don't want a full Fiesta, and I keep saying Fiesta Hermosa, and I'm really sorry. I'm not trying to give that a bad name. I enjoy it. It's fine. It's fine. It's great. But you know what I mean? I kind of want to cap, for a pilot program, I would like to start small. That is, I will be comfortable supporting if we can have some sort of discussion on that. Councilmember Franklin.
Well, thank you. I, I'd like to just see how many booths they could. I don't think we should restrict it. If that's, if those vendors want to come in, that's all part of the, you know, the feeling, the vibe, the holiday vibe. I mean, I'm, I'm just sitting here picturing before we've just been restricted to the sidewalks, and now we are going to be in the street. There's going to be some room there. In terms of the neighbors, you know, I'm sure, but, gosh, can't they just support the north end for one day? In terms of, people can find a place to put their car, they can find a way to get home. 5,000 cars seem like a lot, but when they're streaming, you know, over the course of, you know, six hours, that's a thousand per hour. I mean, I mean, it, it, it doesn't, it's, it's not that neat a formula. But I think it's, I think it's worth it for the north end. They, they have had their, their challenges. And it would be a great sense of community if we do something like this for them. I, you know, I would just like to, what I said before, is approve it, but then have them go and try to find some key sponsors to maybe offset that $10,000 of third-party costs. You know, essentially, we're fronting it for them, so they can go ahead and enter into contracts. But then, if it turns out that they get sponsors and some more booths than they thought, then they could go ahead and reimburse the, the city.
Well, that, and that would be option one.
Yeah, option one.
Yeah, however they pay. Well, you know, I, I guess, I want to get really comfortable, because I do want to bring in people to the north end. I, but I don't want it to be as big as it can be. Like, it's, it's such a different thing. Let me say it this, okay, let me say it this way. I'm, I'm rethinking, as I'm speaking out loud. I do know, at the holiday season, okay, you're going to like this, I promise, the holiday season, like, I went to Redondo Beach to this little, called a Holiday Fair, you know, and there's, there's, you're right, there's crafts, and there's vendors, and it's Pacific stranded, and it's cute local stuff, and there's somebody who's making bee butter, and I think it's called honey, and stuff like that. Right? So it's, it's, it's sort of like what you always talk about, the Christmas markets in Vienna, Budapest, and, you know. So, okay, you know what? I've talked myself into a knot, and I'm ready to support it. It's, it's, you know, the difference is, it's also not a beer garden thing like, okay, I'm talking myself, yeah, I'm talk, I'm talking myself into it. I'm ready to support it. So I am ready to support it. So.
Let's vote.
I, I would, you, you did that.
Did I do that?
Yeah, I'm ready to support it. Oh, Nina, did you want to add something?
I love the Christmas market idea. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. I, I, yeah, let's, let's talk, Jill. I like little wooden things.
Trust me, I'm voting any input I can get at this.
Okay. I, there's been a, there's been a motion by Councilmember North End Tournay, seconded by Steve North End Bid Sherrillian. Sorry, Councilmembers.
And just to clarify, we're going with option.
Oh, was it one?
One.
One, right? I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so there, yeah, so there, the, the bid is going to reimburse the city for third-party costs.
Yeah.
And for those, yeah. Great.
Motion passes four to one, with Mayor Pro Tem lesser voting no.
And I totally appreciate your comments and concerns.
Bah humbug.
What, I know, right?
What did it end up? Did you, that's what it was for?
Four one. Four one. Okay.
No, thank you for that, though.
No, it's, thank you for letting me think out loud there. All right.
It's a process.
It was a process. Consideration of a Safe and Happy Fund donation program, Safe and Happy. That's so cute. For Local Animal Welfare Programs Director Brethauer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, this item before you tonight is an opportunity that we recently learned about around the same time that the City Council was discussing ways to help the Marine Mammal Care Center with its funding needs. So we thought we'd bring this to you tonight for your consideration. However, I just wanted to start by saying, this is completely optional. So if you decide not to opt into the program, no harm, no foul. So what is the Safe and Happy Donation Fund? So we recently started partnering with a vendor named DocuPet for pet licensing services. We are currently in the implementation phase to roll out new online animal licensing features for our upcoming renewal season. So this is part of their service offerings to cities, and it, it does not cost the city anything to opt into the program. So if we opt in, residents would be able to make voluntary tax deductible donations when they obtain or renew their business, or animal license, excuse me. So donations are collected and passed on to organizations of the city's choosing that meet our animal welfare program goals. So again, this is at no cost to the city. So how it works, again, residents have the option to make these voluntary tax deductible donations. And in addition, DocuPet also contributes 20% of the revenue generated from the sale of designer pet tags that they offer to the public. So when someone renews or obtains an animal license, they'll receive a, just a standard tag for free, or for the cost of the license. But they also offer kind of designer tags that the public can purchase, similar to if you go to, you know, pet store and go to one of the kiosks and have one made for your pet. So they also donate to the fund as well for 20%. So the donations will be distributed annually in the beginning of each calendar year. And we would return to City Council with the dollar amount collected in the prior calendar year, and seek confirmation on the specific allocations to the selected Safe and Happy Fund partners. So DocuPet does not retain any of the donated funds from our community. And so 100% of donations would go, would be turned over to the selected partners. So who might our partners be? So we did some research and identified two local nonprofit groups that the city already contracts with. So the first one is the Love Joy Foundation, and their mission statement is shared on slide number five. They are a 501(c)(3) based out of Inglewood, and they were established in 2010 and tax exempt since 2014. The city's animal control team partners with them, and they are also just a well-known local rescue organization in the community. So slide number seven has some additional statistics, including they've saved over 15,000 animals, and they support our licensing and safety goals by placing rescued dogs in responsible homes, reducing the number of strays on our streets, and therefore enhancing local pet welfare in the community. The second potential partner we identified is the Marine Mammal Care Center, which you recently learned more about on May 20th, when you agreed to their funding request of $50,000 for operational support. So slide eight also shares their mission statement. And they are also a 501(c)(3) organization based in San Pedro. They were established in 1992 and have been tax exempt since, since 2016. Now, this organization has less of a nexus to dog licensing. However, they are focused on animal welfare and emergency responses at our LA County beaches. Some, some other statistics include treating over 10,000 animals since 1992. And as we recently learned, they also received thousands of hotline calls about animals in distress. The Marine Mammal Care Center, their work aligns with our goals, and their efforts on animal rescue and rehabilitation leads to safer beaches, which supports our animal control team with public health and safety. So I do believe there's a representative here from the Marine Mammal Care Center, and we did receive feedback and interest from the Love Joy Foundation. And I thought she was going to be here, but maybe she had to leave during the break earlier. But they were very much in support as well. So in conclusion, if the city decides to opt into the Safe and Happy Donation Fund program, the city would be able to offer residents an easy voluntary and tax deductible, tax deductible means of supporting animal welfare in our community. Also, we would be increasing funding for these animal welfare initiatives without impacting the city's budget. And third, we could be strengthening our community engagement regarding responsible pet ownership and animal care. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Council, Mayor Pro Tem, for one more.
Our meeting, yeah, right.
Loather.
I heard you mentioned that the representative of the Love Joy Foundation is no longer here. But does staff have any data on the number of animal rescues, rehabilitation, or placements in Manhattan Beach to better establish the nexus beyond the partnership and the alignment with the city's goals? I'm wondering if you have data in terms of how they've served our community, so there's a better argument in favor of allowing them to have a donation site on our city website.
I do not believe we have that specific information. I'm not sure if the police department has any information off the top of their head, since they work with them, but not tonight.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do think that it's where we send animals that we don't, like, if they come in and they don't have a tag, so they go there.
Correct.
So we do work with them in that regard.
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions?
We'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Tournay.
Okay, thank you. Just two, a couple of brief questions. Would opting into this program add any work to staff time?
The only work would be that additional staff report every year, where we come, report to you how much was collected, and then ask for the City Council to choose a partner agency for the funds to go to.
Okay, thank you. And then, do you know, are you aware of other cities that have opted into this? And how much roughly could we anticipate on raising? I'm just wondering if it's worth the endeavor.
I know the city of Torrance, they also contract with DocuPet, and I'm looking to see if we have how much they collected in the last year. We could, let me see if I can get that number for you in the next few minutes. And so I know city of Torrance does. And then also, there is another, okay, yes, Torrance collected about $10,000 in one year. And then I do believe they spread it across four rescue organizations in their city.
Okay.
Another organization we identified is called the Southeast Area Animal Control Authority, which covers cities like Carson, Downey, and a few others. And so, you know, cities contract together with this authority, and they also do the program as well.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, hi. Do, do we know of any time that we've ever sponsored a charity to promote giving to?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. And how about, you know, there's, there's websites like Charity Navigator that assess charities and rate them and evaluate them. Have you looked into that? Have we done any sort of deep dive on, on them? Because we will be affiliating our names with them.
So we, as written in the staff report, we did, you know, concluded the research we did on the two organizations. And we did select the two organizations that the city already partners with.
That, that we already partnered with?
Yes. So as mentioned, so the.
Oh, in terms of.
Animal Control already works with the Love Joy Foundation. Anytime there's an animal who needs a place to go. And then in May, I think it was May 20th, the city decided to create an agreement with the Marine Mammal Care Center and fund $50,000 towards their operations as well.
Okay. So do we have an idea how much, you know, we may?
Collect?
Net for them?
Um, no, I mean, it's really hard to gauge. So city of Torrance, so, you know, bigger population than we have. If they collected 10,000 a year, you know, I know we have very generous residents in town, but it, so it's hard to, hard to gauge.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Sherrillian.
I think the concept is great. I think we're all lovers of animal and marine mammals. And I just share some of the thoughts that Mayor Pro Tem had about putting an actual donation button on our, our site, since we've never done it. And the value of this almost seems de minimis. If Torrance did 10,000, and we may do 3,000 or 25,000, we don't know. Or we could do more. And I think we just gave 50,000 to the marine mammal. I think if, and we have MB Love as well. I just, I can't see putting, collecting donations. That's just my thought. But I love the concept, but I just don't feel comfortable.
Yeah, understood. That was definitely something we debated internally, too. You know, a lot of retail stores, grocery stores, they ask you, you know, do you want to round up your purchase? And so we didn't, we did discuss that as well, like whether it was too much for the city to do it, too.
Okay. Council, lend a question.
I share the sentiments of Councilmember Sherrillian, obviously. But to better understand the timing, my understanding is staff is here tonight because this program is scheduled for rolling out in time for the fall licensing process. Or help us understand the timing for this decision, particularly if we decide, maybe not now, particularly in the absence of a little more data as to how this money is needed, how their services apply to our city. Do we have an issue with, I guess, is there a need for helping those that, that can't afford it? I don't think so. In other cities, there might be a larger population of street dogs. I'm reading about the Love Joy. I just want to better understand the nexus here a little bit better.
Certainly. Sorry, distracted by the honking outside.
What's the timing?
Yeah. So the timing on our implementations, we are actively working with this vendor to set up the new online portal to obtain and renew business, or animal licenses. So yes, the timing of us bringing this to you tonight was that if the city decided to opt in, then we would go ahead and implement this with that program. But if the decision tonight is to not opt in, then we would move forward with, you know, the rest of the, the program and just to allow online renewals.
But we can opt in later, correct?
Certainly, yeah.
Thank you.
And Council, just to go back to a question one of the Councilmembers had earlier. The other instance where the city has done this is with the Pink Patch Project. There is a donation that's made to an org, a charity as a result of the, the profits we make from the Pink Patch Project through the police department.
That's a good, that's a good point. Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, just quickly. So when you make a donation, presumably when you're paying for the license that we're going to track you down and make you pay, sorry, just a little editorial comment there on our new software solution.
Yeah.
But, you know, are, are we charging a processing fee on the license? And then would we be charging a processing fee on the donation as well?
Um, not on the donation, no, I don't believe so, no. So we're not charging customers to pay via credit card, if that's what you're asking.
Because the whole idea is to present this when they're paying for a license online, presumably.
Yes, it would be.
Okay, so there's going to be, it'll, if they're, what is the processing fee for using a credit card?
Well, that's actually an item that we're expected to come back and discuss with the City Council. I think it was brought up maybe during our budget process or. I think it was brought up maybe during our budget process or another item, but we were planning on bringing that discussion back because for several years, the city has not charged or passed on credit card convenience fees to our customers, whereas other government agencies do. So we, you know, I don't think that's been discussed in many, many years, so we were planning on bringing that back if you would like to discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions before I open up to the public? Okay, thank you. Director Brethauer. Okay, are there any comments in chambers? Okay, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. So Mike, I didn't ask questions. I think this was a creative idea from staff. I'm guessing that when we talked about allocating funding to the Marine Mammal Care Center, staff identified that, oh, this is actually possible through our new animal licensing software and brought it back to us. And, you know, we also have other, I know that we've been interested in, in how we can help the Roundhouse. The Roundhouse doesn't qualify under this program, I'm told, something I've asked about. So I think it was a creative idea to come from, you know, it's, your staff's doing due diligence. Hey, this vendor offers this, let's suggest it. But, so I, I just want to say that that's where I assume this is coming from. But I also hear my colleagues, you know, maybe there's other places that people want to contribute to, our name's going to be attached to, we want to be sure there's no, you know, malfeasance or, not that there is, to either of the organizations. So I'm prepared to support whatever, you know, the direction of the majority is here, but I, I wanted to frame it positively because, you know, it was a opportunity to help some puppies and sea lions and, but it, it's not the only way that we can do that. So thank you, staff, for bringing us some, some ideas from the functionality of the new program. So any comments or motions or? So it could, it could die on the vine right now, that's fine. This is not, this is not a mission critical thing. It's a nice to have. But in lieu of that, why don't you all go out and give contribution to Marine Mammal Center or Lovejoy?
It would help me to come to a decision to support this if I had more data as how this is directly benefiting our community and our members beyond the partnerships that we currently have. So at this point, I'm not prepared to move forward, but that doesn't mean that I wouldn't be at a later date.
He loves puppies.
I own, sadly, only one now.
Oh, sorry.
And two cats.
I think, I think we're done probably with this. I don't, that's, that's fine, we can move on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Looking creatively, okay. All right, so that was that. So City Council AB 1234 reports, I'm going to make one. A few of us attended the Independent Contract, or Independent Cities Associations Conference this past weekend near San Diego and I went at the last minute and I'm so glad I did. I, I think it's really value additive for our community when we attend these. And this conference, as well as the Contract Cities, are really nice because they're intimate, they're small, they're hands-on. So I wanted to say that two of the, three, there were three sessions that I got really a lot out of the, there was one about bringing filming back to LA and how cities can devise policies that can make it easier for people to get film licenses and more economical as much as we can. And already been in contact with one of the women from Film LA who, and, and she says, no, I, I already work with your staff really well and I know that our staff is also working on updating their film permits. So, but that was just a really useful session there. There was one on natural disasters that was interesting, but also germane to a couple of the public comments tonight without a Brown Act, the Southern California Edison was one of the sponsors and their rep who over, you know, works with our area reached out to me and I kind of brought up the issues that we were brought up tonight, whether it was the outage. I did not bring up aluminum versus copper because that was very granular and I appreciate it, but I will bring it up to her. And, and I also brought up the undergrounding utility district and she is Mary Kurtz from the scheduling and meeting for Tallyn and this person and myself, so that could be fruitful, who knows? So very good, just wanted to bring that up. So, and do you guys want to add anything different or?
As a newly elected council member, I thought it was also very helpful to meet with other cities, members from other cities, so that we can learn from each other best practices. So I thought that was very valuable. And then one of the sessions that I thought was particularly interesting was how AI, you know, for better or worse, can really help streamline and make our city more transparent and accessible to, to residents. I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah, check out the city of Hawthorne's website and their bot, whose name is Nate, short for Nathaniel Hawthorne. That was cool.
Cool.
Yeah.
And I, I found it very valuable to meet directly with Supervisor Lindsey Horvath, who was a lunch speaker there. So she was very generous with her time to take Q and A in the public meeting, but then also one-on-one. So I addressed with her some concerns about homelessness and, you know, prosecution of crimes, support of Prop 36 and how that gets rolled out and working with the new District Attorney, County District Attorney Nathan Hockman. So that was really good. All that in five minutes.
Yeah, no, also though, and I, this is an AB 1234, but along the lines of homelessness, we had representatives from the governor's office and today to meet with Tallyn and myself. Of course, we talked about housing, do not worry, but also we brought up all the concerns or, and the, the issues, I know some of the ones you raised with Supervisor Horvath, care courts, the things that, you know, you were talking about with her. I also mentioned those and we've got some direction and some, some ideas on how to proceed, so I wanted to let you all know that. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so item 23, oh, sorry, Joe. And that is the consideration of a request by Councilmember Sherillian and Franklin's to discuss options to ensure equal medical insurance coverage for all city council members. So Quinn, did you want to, is this, this is the one that required two to get on and now would require a third vote to go onto a future agenda?
That's correct. As I stated earlier, that, that's the process that complies fully with the Brown Act.
Yep. Doesn't, I, I'm not prepared to add a third vote here. So it looks like there's not a third vote. So let's move on to future agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I have, I have one?
Yes.
So I would like to get a second vote to place the following item on a future agenda is to explore options as to large and oversized trucks parking in the congested downtown area and the north Manhattan Beach Business District. With our narrow streets and the influx of many tourists and residents going to the beach, such trucks might interfere with vehicular or pedestrian traffic or be a hazard to public safety.
Be your second vote, but with a particular direction to staff to better understand what California law requires so that we can understand what we can and cannot do if it involves further amendments to our municipal code. Is that consistent with what you're seeking? Councilmember Franklin? Is that consistent in what you're looking for?
Yep.
Good, I'll be your second.
All considerations.
I have one, but did you have another one or?
No.
So maybe this is the same one, but I don't think so. I, it might be more directive, actually. I'd like staff to come back with an update or some guidance as to what we can do about the issues raised by folks in the downtown with regards to food trucks. Is it the same, it's the same?
Yeah.
Because it's about safety, because we, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, all right.
Including.
It's the same issue? Okay, but I, okay, all right, that's fine then. I would like to bring up, or you go ahead, do your thing. Are you going to do the parking?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to add for a future agenda item to examine our parking pad policy and executions of.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I have a question for my colleagues. This, this process for getting items on the agenda is very different than when I was last on council, I believe, and I find it a little clunky because it used to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem for one more meeting. I think, I feel like it used to be if, if, was it two or three people, you just, you could put it on the agenda. I think it comes back and it's very, I feel like it takes too long almost to get something, certain things on an agenda, for instance, like, like this safety with the food truck thing. I think we all want to see that go on the agenda. So why do we have to wait another meeting to then go, yes, we want that on the agenda? I mean, because, because like you rightly pointed out tonight, there was nothing wrong with the way we did item 23 and there doesn't need to be a staff report for that. So it's sort of waste, in a way, wasting another two weeks because there's not, not, there's not going to be anything on in a staff report in two weeks that says anything more about oversized vehicles and safety. So.
Yes, and there are some topics that the second report can't be more fleshed out. But ironically, if you wanted to reconsider that policy, you would need a second vote.
I understand that, but that, so that, I, I got, I got that. So there's two things I'm asking, yeah, I want a second vote to.
A second vote.
Got a second vote for that, but back to that, the oversized vehicles and the congested, can we bring that back? I don't want to make that a two-step process.
Well, so, yes, and, and the amendment to that about California law, I'm sure we can put together something that's, takes less than four hours that will give you a lot more information.
Well, so what are you really saying?
So in other words.
Can we have a policy come to us?
You could give direction at the second meeting. See, sometimes there are.
I see.
Items where you can actually give us the direction, for instance.
At the second meeting?
Yes, you can say, I've looked at the law, I've looked at the ordinance, you know, that'll be part of the staff report.
Okay.
I'd like to recommend something like a new ordinance.
All right.
Because that would, the third step would actually be consideration of that ordinance.
Okay, good. So it's not going to come back in two weeks and say, now do we have a third vote? Okay, gotcha, just, just confirming.
That makes sense then, right?
Fantastic, as my last action as mayor. And also, but I do have a second vote to come back to discuss, right?
Policy.
Policy.
Yes.
All right, okay, City Manager report?
At this time, I just wanted to welcome two new faces to the council chambers. We met Ted Simon earlier, our interim Public Works Director, and also we have our chief, Jesse Alexander. So just wanted to say, welcome to the city of Manhattan Beach family and thank you for being here.
Excellent. And I, yeah, we don't want to bring back the volleyball team. Okay, sorry, is there a report for the city manager or for the?
City Attorney.
City Attorney, thanks, I got rid of my agenda.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to adjourn to a closed session on Tuesday, August 5th at 5:00 PM, right here in City Council Chamber 1400 Highland Boulevard.